I never have my ringer on. That's a problem. I don't usually have my ringer on. I told you about the girl I work with who has a song.
Good evening. I call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education, Monday, November 7th, 2022, to order. Mr. Zink, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Adi?
Here.
Ms. Bodie?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here. Mr. Zink, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, never be just.
Thank you, Board. We'll move to number three on our agenda, approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. I'll take that as a second.
Sure.
Mr. Zink?
Mr. Adi? Yes. Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to number four on the agenda, opening items.
I would like to let everyone know that I just received a letter from an attorney representing Matt Miller accusing me of spreading false information.
Mrs. Bodie, you're out of order. And you were going to stick-
Straight up intimidation.
We are going to stick to our agenda for the evening.
What?
We will move to number four.
You just committed that is false.
Mrs. Bodie, again.
I would like to know that.
You are out of order.
We don't need false information.
You have children. Mrs. Bodie, you are out of order.
And it's not going to work. You have children in the audience. Oh, I warned him.
Board, we are on the agenda, number four, the Board President's comments. I will save my comments until later in the meeting. We'll move to B Superintendent comments. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. Just a recognition that Friday is Veterans Day and that a lot of our schools are doing Veterans Day assemblies. So acknowledge our servicemen and women, past and present, and those that are thinking about that with our Military Signing Day that we have in the spring. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know a lot of the schools are doing assemblies and programs for Friday, so we look forward to seeing those. That's all.
Thank you, anything further?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Zink, Treasurer's comments.
Yeah, later in the meeting, I'll have a little presentation to do, a little planning for the five-year forecast, so I'll save all other comments until then.
We'll look forward to it. We'll move to number five on the agenda, the School Spotlight. First up, we have Mr. Nugute, the Executive Director of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, to recognize one of our staff.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board of Education and Mr. Miller. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and spend a few minutes. And I'd ask Scott Kaufman, who was in the back, if Scott would-
He's hiding.
Yeah, he's hiding back there.
Trying to hide.
And come forward and I'm here tonight to show our appreciation to the Lakota School District for Scott's time as our- They served the past three years on our State Board and you rotate on our State Board for Scott's a longtime member of the Southwest District Board. And you rotate on our State Board as a rotation on there. And Scott spent the last three years as a State Board Member. And two years ago, became our Vice President and a year ago, he was our President. And so, you know, my appreciation to you as a district or sharing Scott, you know, I've been an athletic director before and know the demands that sit on that position. And to spend what would be normal free time, dealing with state issues and I'm, I know who I'm talking to, directing back to you folks during COVID and all those other things, to be very honest with you, I'm not sure how we would have made it through that without Scott's leadership that way. And so, you know, I would share with you, my impressions of Scott is he's a Firebird first, dedicated to the student athletes and the students here in Lakota. And he represents your district very well. He's a member of the Southwest District Board, which puts on our tournaments and that. But what I found with Scott is that Scott is regarded in the state of Ohio, not just Lakota, as one of the best athletic administrators in the state of Ohio. And I know a lot of folks lean on Scott down here in the Southwest District for advice. I still call Scott a couple of times a week because he gives me that practical experience that we need so much in our office on how, how things that we do affect our student athletes in our schools across the state. And, you know, when I was hired as the Executive Director three years ago, I remember the first meeting I had with Scott and Jeff Casella, then the President, Scott was the Vice President. And they talked about coming on the board and the financial issues we had and some other issues. And he wanted to leave things better for the next people. And there's no question that Scott's leadership did that. And so, Scott, I can't thank you enough. And I want to share with your community what a great guy you have here and how he supports your students and your student athletes. And Scott, we appreciate your leadership and your friendship there. And Lakota should be very proud of what you're doing, not just here, but in the state of Ohio to make a difference. And so, I'm only saying this because any time we need somebody to host anything, I call Scott. He's involved. He's hosting a game Saturday night for us after a long Friday night, to which I'll tell you that the Lakota Firebirds are going to be on against Elder on Spectrum and all of Southwest Ohio. So we just formalize that today. So that's great. And then share my appreciation towards Matt and for allowing Scott to do that and you. And I met Matt when he was at Sylvania as a 20-year superintendent. So I met Matt. We were both young kids. I've got gray hair now. He's held his very good. So that's great. But not only would I talk about Scott, but Matt is regarded as one of the best superintendents in the state. So Matt, thank you for allowing Scott to do that. So thanks, Scott.
Scott?
Do I want to talk? Do you want to give me a mic? No, I just want to thank, first of all, Doug, when we hired him at the association, he's just been a huge positive impact on what's happened at the state level. But I couldn't do what I do or what I did for the association without the support of the Board, the Superintendent and the entire district. So I'm grateful for that. It was a huge honor for me, not only to represent the state, but to represent Lakota. So thank you for letting me be a part.
Stay for a moment.
Mr. Noah?
No, just thanks, Scott, for the work that you do, not just at West, but for the whole district. And it's not an easy job. So thanks for what you do day in and day out for our kids, both the athletes, but just the day-to-day students interaction that you have with our kids means a lot to them, means a lot to their parents and to the staff. So I can't thank you enough for the work that you do.
Thank you. Is it okay to do a group picture?
We're not quite done yet.
Oh, gosh.
Hold one moment. Mr. Zink?
Scott's one of the first people I got to know when I came here. But Scott's been wonderful from the Treasurer's Office perspective. He's somebody that always calls, asks questions and helps us to roll things out with everybody else. So we really appreciate Scott.
Board, comments?
Um, I would just like to say that he not only does a great job in the district and at West, but he also, he and I just had this conversation this past weekend. He's also does what's best for all of the kids in the district. His main focus is Firebirds first, but he likes to see Lakota East come in as a close second. And he helps out over there with our new AD over there. And he really truly does care about each and every kid in this district. So thank you, Scott.
My wife and I have lived in the district for 28 years. Both of our kids are full-time graduates of West and went to Plains and, you know, Endeavor and Cherokee. So they've been around and nowhere else we would have rather been and continue to be. So thank you.
And I also don't think everyone fully realizes how much it truly is a 24/7 job. And it's soup to nuts. It's not only the events themselves, but the maintenance and everything else that has to be done behind it. And we love the new lights when they, when they score a touchdown at the stadium and you oversaw even construction projects in this role. So thank you for the full breadth of everything you do. And as we know, trying to balance the needs of all of our student athlete parents, I'm one of them. You know, it can be a challenging job and you always do it with a smile on your face. So thank you for that.
I also have a comment. Scott, I remember during the graduation, we talked about sport and I told you that I don't understand football. You encouraged me to continue to watch and I will love it. And because of that, I've started coming out to watch football every Fridays and I'm proud that our students in West are doing so awesome. So you encouraged me to watch football. I used to love soccer, but now I love football. Thank you.
They're both awesome.
Mrs. Bodie? I'd like to say thank you for your leadership at Lakota and we have a, we have a great athletic organization because of you. So thank you.
Scotty?
Done you a long time now as a, as a parent and as a school board member. And one of my favorite times in our events for the year, the Lakota Athletic Hall of Fame. And we hear about the impact of our student activities on our students and years and years afterwards. Those are relationships. Those are skill-building activities, whether it's on the field, it's in the theater. It's not just the classroom. There are so many places that learning and leadership skills take place. And you have been an integral part of that. I'm also very appreciative of the fact that you've represented Lakota at the state level and made sure that our voice was heard there as well. So thank you for all that you've done. Now it's time for a group picture and you can move.
Board, we will move to the School Spotlight, Liberty ESC, our Liberty Leaders, Van Gordon Sixth Grade Preschool Mentor Program, excuse me, East High School Student Advisory Council and Liberty Junior Young Scholars Program. Mrs. Fuller?
Good evening. As you know, our monthly School Spotlight has gotten a makeover this year to shine the light on even more of the positive things happening throughout Lakota every day. We're celebrating four different schools tonight. I'll share a little bit from three schools and then we'll invite one school to join us in person up here. First up tonight on the screen is Van Gordon Elementary School. Academically, they may be worlds apart, but a new mentoring program between Van Gordon Sixth Graders and Lakota Preschoolers, all housed under the same roof, is proving that they have a lot to gain from one another. Once a week, in six-week rotations, about 100 Sixth Graders are voluntarily spending the recess in the school's preschool wing. The students can be found assisting during circle time, centers and tabletop activities. They're also reading one-on-one or in small groups with preschoolers. Sixth graders are getting as much out of the experience as their preschool counterparts. One student said, "It's so fun helping the preschoolers learn new things." Another added, "I look forward to going to see the little kids every Thursday and helping them with their crafts." The program is designed to help bridge the elementary and preschool communities that have traditionally operated completely independent of one another and provide leadership experiences to Van Gordon Sixth Grade students. A brand-new student-led group at Liberty Junior School gives African-American male students their own space for support, positive interactions with staff and one another, and opportunities to lead. They call themselves Liberty's Young Scholars. The invitation was extended to all 65 African-American males who attend Liberty. The monthly meetings are optional and take place during the school day to help remove any barriers to being able to participate. The group's advisor, Liberty's new Assistant Principal, Andrew Ovington, stressed that the group is student-led, meaning he provides guidance but gives decision-making power to the student members. Their meetings usually consist of small group discussion and games to help build community. They're also in the process of planning for future guest speakers to visit with their groups. Andrew is supported by his co-advisor, School Counselor DeMarco Robinson, and seven other volunteers who each helps facilitate their own group of six to eight students during the meetings. They also do regular check-ins with their students between meetings. The volunteers include Jody Green, Rico Hill, Jarrell Tompkins, Sean Benton, Sam Olner, Brady Webb and Ken Cowan. So over at Lakota East High School, they are excited to reboot its Student Advisory Council this year. Assistant Principal Katrina Fugate is leading the charge. But given the group's mission to empower student voice, the group's real authority lies with the students. So much so that one of the first orders of business is to officially rename the group at their next meeting. The 50 students were recommended by their teachers and ultimately selected to bring together a diverse representation of East student body. For now, they are meaning weekly to build an actionable student-led plan to implement a PBS program at East. That stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Support and is basically a way of creating a culture built on reinforcing positive behavior and good character. In other words, modeling the East way. Part of their challenge is also to make recommendations and help carry out beautification efforts for their building that will positively impact school culture and morale for both East students and staff. Student Voice is a major pillar of personalized learning, so we're excited to see what comes out of this group's efforts. Now for tonight's guests. Over at Liberty Early Childhood, Liberty Leaders have become an exemplary model of the power of student voice. The group's successes speak for themselves, but even more powerful is the tenacity and passion with which this group leads their school community. We're lucky enough to have them here with us tonight to share that passion. So please join me in welcoming this year's second grade Liberty Leaders.
Hello, my name is Dana Holgarth and I'm the School Counselor at Liberty Early Childhood School. Actually, I want to take a deep breath real quick.
Could we bring the mic up just a little bit, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm the School Counselor at Liberty Early Childhood School and I'm here with my Assistant Principal, Mrs. Albrink. And we appreciate the invitation to share about the Liberty Leaders. I think of them as second-grade student council that show leadership skills. I help them develop the leadership skills and serve as role models for their, and they serve as role models for their peers. We've had this program for 15 years, but in the last couple of years, we expanded by incorporating our Kids Helping Kids program. Our Liberty Leaders will share with you about what Liberty Leaders have done to help spread kindness to others. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McCory. Liberty Leaders are role models for other students at our- and we are respectful, responsible, problem solvers and safe. At our school, we also care about other people.
Hi, my name is Audrey Dunaway. We wrote letters to Ms. Holgarth to tell why we wanted to be Liberty Leaders. Here's my letter. Dear Ms. Holgarth, hi, my name is Audrey Dunaway. The reason I think I should be a Liberty Leader is because I'm kind, helpful, and I share things with my class. I'm also responsible, a problem solver, respectful and safe. I'm thankful that Ms. Cumberledge chose me to be a Liberty Leader. I'm very excited. From Audrey Dunaway.
Hi, my name is Wesley Sims. Liberty Leaders started in 2007 and we've been doing several learning projects every year since that time. Last year, Liberty Leaders and Van Gordon students filled a cargo truck full of games, toys and books for the students in Dawson Springs, Kentucky. Hi, my name is Maggie. A Liberty Leader came up with the idea of brightening the day of the students that were hit by the tornado. We collected enough for each student to have two books, a game and a kind note. It really did cheer them up.
Hi, my name is Priya. This year, we just finished the Reach Lakota Stuff the Best project. We were able to collect and count all the cans donations. We had a friendly grade-level competition. First grade team won by collecting five more cans than the second grade. It was a close race, but we're excited that we're able to collect 1,842 cans. That was the most we ever collected. We have about 420 students in our school. That is about four cans per student.
Hi, my name is Noah Frye. And we also hope with Kindness Week and have kindness readers come to each classroom and read a book and share how we can all show kindness.
Hi, my name is Abel. We invite administrators from across the district. Central office and school board members to come and read. It is always a fun day of learning about kindness.
Hi. Hi, my name is Bea. Paddy's Repatience has had different names over the years, but the purpose has always been to help others that some type of blood cancer. We raised, we raised online last year $1,350, but since 2007, we have raised $28,000. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and share at the Liberty Leaders and how Liberty Early Childhood School has been helping our own community as well as other communities. We will keep moving forward with kindness. Thank you again for letting us share about Liberty Leaders.
Can we have our students come back over to the microphone for just a moment? Mr. Miller?
Kudos to our students for how well they did tonight and also to the adults. Were there any other staff members here this evening? From Liberty ECS? Okay, just checking. But I just appreciate all the work that goes into this and I see it, you know, at least once a week with bigs. But I see that the culture that's been built over time at Liberty Early Childhood School is something that you see in the classrooms and in the offices and the cafeteria and the hallway. So it permeates everything. So thank you for all the work that goes into this. And these are great life lessons that our kids are learning. Thank you.
Mr. Zink, anything?
I just wanted to congratulate all of the Liberty Leaders and thank you for coming to the meeting and keep up the good work.
Board? Mr. Adi?
Yeah, congratulations, everyone of you. I'm so proud to see this. This is what I really want to, want to see more and more in our meetings. Focus on our students, their achievements and what they are doing. I'm very proud of you. Just know that you can be anybody you want to be. Just keep focused. You can be anybody, okay? It's a country of dreams. Dream big. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. You did an excellent job. I was very impressed. I came to help pick up your food during the Stuff the Bus. And I was very impressed with all you had done. I know sometimes we get some pushback that it's not educational when we're collecting cans and boxing them up. But you guys did a great job. You told me that you separated them by tens and then put them in the boxes and then counted by tens. And when I walked in, you knew exactly how many cans you had collected. And you helped us load the truck. And even though the boxes were heavy and sometimes it took four of you to carry them, you did not complain at all. So I'm very proud of you. So thank you for coming tonight and congratulations on all of those cans.
And I'd also like to add some, one of the students mentioned the kindness initiative and having guest speakers come in to read. And that is always a highlight for us every year. And you guys ask the very best questions when we're there and are inquisitive and want to know more about the book and what we're doing there. And I always appreciate what a good job you do, asking questions and wanting to learn more. So thank you for that. You guys did such a great job this evening. And I think these are some good skills that you guys are developing to be leaders in the community, which is really important, and leaders in, in your school and throughout school. So good job and keep up the good work. And I'm really proud of you guys.
You guys are amazing ambassadors for us. So thank you so much for being leaders in your schools and for our community too. I love the fact that you're learning to give back at this age. I think that's absolutely awesome. Mrs. Schaefer is right. I really love going in and reading too. It's one of the best parts of the day. And I also want to say thank you to our staff that you took a community service opportunity and made it a learning opportunity too. So thank you for that, for the hard work that you do every day with our kids. So do you guys mind if we take a picture with you? Okay, come on over to the middle.
My leadership began. My leadership began at Liberty.
We're going to give our students a moment to leave and let, let those in the back that would like to sit come forward. Mrs. Schaefer just made the comment that that's the beginning in first grade of their college essays. My leadership began in first grade. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, number six, the Board Updates. Mrs. Schaefer, we'll start with Butler Tech.
Um, I'm sure Adam will be surprised to know that we did the five-year forecast at our Butler Tech meeting as well and all as well at Butler Tech. In addition, we approved the Architectural Service and Construction Management at Risk for the Advanced Manufacturing Facility we've been talking about that was, is going to happen in Hamilton, as well as the Aviation Education Center in Middletown. Both projects are part of the $15 million appropriation from the Butler County Commissioners that we've been speaking of. We continue to work with the city of Middletown and Hamilton as well as Miami University to solidify plans and to see how we might collaborate and work together on those projects. We plan to meet with the business partners and industry in January to develop curriculum for both of those campuses. And in addition, now that, now that we're moving on to the next phase and the next group of projects, we also did a ribbon cutting at the Butler Tech Natural Science Center on October 27th. Our students are thrilled to be in that space. When you look at the difference of where they are now versus the portables they came from, it's night and day. And again, we look to continue to expand our opportunities for more students with expanding those facilities.
So any questions?
So, any questions?
Hearing nothing further. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. We'll move to legislative. Mr. Zink, Mr. Miller?
Just, I know that we'll be at Capitol Conference next week. I think we'll hear more about some legislative items that are coming up. We did have a superintendent legislative update in the county from NS Britton last week. Not so much legislation as so much as a lot of other people are also, well, everybody. Let's be honest. There's also feeling the pinch in terms of staffing with staff, but also buses and routes. And we've seen an uptick in that as well. The probably the only other piece of legislation that we'll probably be watching, I'm sure there'll be lots, but this one of note Senate Bill three sixty-one, which is the authorization for veterans to serve as teachers. And so that was introduced just October third. Still need to have some teaching experience, which I'm not sure how they'll frame that yet. So that's a mandate as well. But it gives some of our service minimum coming back an opportunity to help school districts. So that's just one of note that I had. Do you have anything?
I would expect we should have a flurry of bills to talk about, the lame duck session at our December meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
So perhaps the executive summary for the board? What we're looking at?
If I could just add, I apologize. I didn't include it in the Butler Tech report, but it falls under here as well that I had the opportunity to make meet with Representative Cindy Abrams, the House Whip. And she also mentioned how many, how much legislation they anticipate to be coming down the aisle. And she was very supportive in all things education.
Great to hear. Glad you took time for that visit. We had talked about while we're at Capitol Conference next week, doing a legislative visit with the legislative team. Has that been arranged?
I don't know that it has yet. I don't know if we've heard back yet. Haven't heard back yet.
So it's in process? Would you update us then?
I'll send an update tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And then I had one final point. It's brought, been brought to the board's attention that one of our board members testified at the recent State Board of Education meeting. And it is absolutely the right of any elected official to provide testimony on issues that they're concerned about. Other elected officials also testified that day. And those officials, while they did give their elected titles, they also stated that they were there in an individual capacity and representing their own personal opinions. This is in no way to deny Mrs. Bodie's right to do so, but there should have been clarification that she was not speaking for the entire board at the time. The board wasn't aware that she planned to testify, had no idea what she would be saying, and her testimony doesn't represent this body. I wanted to clarify that question. It's been put forward to the board several times now. With nothing further, we'll move on to community engagement. See, Mrs. Casper.
Uh, we had too many conversations last week with students, one at East and one at West. Our students are always the most honest and the most blunt with us. So it's always a really good conversation. We, I think we had twenty, twenty-five in each, one on Wednesday and one on Thursday.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Eighteen and nineteen. I can't count.
They took up the room.
Yeah, they just take up the room. So basically, we, we like to meet, we like to touch base with our students at least once a year and we didn't get to it last year. And one of the things that we wanted to talk about in, with them as the master facility plan is being presented on what they feel after now, most of them were juniors and seniors and having gone through most of their education, what they would like to see in, for future generations and what their education would look out. So they had some really out of the box thinking and some really great comments and some challenges too for us to look at. Again, they were very, very honest and that's why we love to talk about, to our students. We're gonna try this year to get down to the junior high level and speak with them because it's been a couple of years we've spoken with them. So we had a DPC meeting where curriculum was presented. And I think that's all we've done. This is the last meeting.
So that was, that was two full days, basically.
It was two, yeah, we did, yeah.
You know, something that we found interesting, we started the conversation off with our high schoolers. And just a, a one word, what's your, what's your high school experience been like? And it was pretty eye-opening and I think Mrs. Casper and I both were one of those pieces that makes you shake your head. You realize that these students were the ones that went through the entire pandemic experience, which dramatically changed their entire high school experience. And I think for families too, because there's an expectation of what you think you'll get to do in high school, what some of those highlights are going to be, and then that changed dramatically for our kids. And so some of the words, just I throw them out there for the board just to consider as we think about lessons learned. Sporadic, slow, complicated, stressful, roller coaster ride on both sides of the, of the district. Perplexing, hard and strange. And those were just some of the words. And they, they also had very positive things as well. But just when you look at the one word of what was that experience like? I, I think we can all feel for what those students have gone through and what we learned from that, that process. So there are notes coming out for the entire board to be able to hear from our kids and
Really resilient.
They did a terrific job.
They really did a good job. They, it's always impressive because they come up afterwards and thank us for allowing them to speak. And they, they really have a lot to say. They just, they're so much smarter than I was at that age.
There was no shyness in the room, which was great. Yeah. It was, it was really good. Any questions about community engagement? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to number seven, administrative reports. Mr. Miller, we know we've had a recent report card. We'll start off with the student achievement update, please.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Coney to come up to give the student achievement update. Mr. Coney is the executive director of our curriculum department and he shared with DPC last week and has an update for the board today as well.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present a student achievement update. What I wanted to do by gathering this information tonight was give a full update on where we are, information we have, what we've learned from their report card and what we've acted upon. I can't imagine to be able to get into every single piece of that. I'm sure there'll be questions that come up. Happy to answer those as I go through or follow up after this if necessary. So just some context, everything that we do in this district is predicated on our strategic plan that has pillars of we are personalized and we are future ready. And so all of our actions are always designed to make sure that we are impacting every student possible and done in a personalized sort of way. As was just mentioned by the conversation with the high school students, I think all of the results that we see across the region, the state and nationally have been greatly impacted by COVID. And the results that we've seen there, those have impacted different places differently. But I do think that all scores across the country, as we saw from the recent NAPR report, there is, there is a drop and that's why we've been addressing that, that little learning loss or schooling loss appropriately. When we talk about the state report card, it is critically important to us. It is a guidepost for us. It is one measurement of student achievement. But we also know that it is not the only measure of what we do every day for students. We look at all kinds of data. We look at attendance and behavior, behavior data. We look at all the importance of non-tested subjects and our specials and our extracurriculars. You think about the two presentations we had here this evening that highlight our extracurriculars and athletics and our clubs like our Liberty Leaders and all those things that make a full experience for our students. Those are all very important. I would also say that when I, some context around this, I'm incredibly proud of our administrators and our teachers for the focus that they have had throughout the pandemic, throughout all of our reactions and responses to that. They have really been focused on the well-being and safety and health of our children and addressing that learning loss in the most appropriate way. They've been incredible to work with and I do say with, it is not some sort of heavy-handed plan that is, that is implemented. It's really working with our administrators, with our teachers, to be able to support our students. The way I'd like to handle this, the report is, you've heard of E plus R equals O for a lot of our school culture building. When we look at it from an instructional standpoint, we look at evidence, our response delivers outcomes. That's the way that we'll look at this this evening. So when you think about the evidence from the state report card, some of the strengths first, things that were positive about our recent report card, our performance index. And just for a little context, the performance index is a measurement of all levels of performance for our students. And so you get, you get marks for each of those. So the better that every student does, it's not getting a certain percentage to pass the test, but it's all of those levels. Our performance index from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two was raised from an eighty-four to a ninety-one point three, which I thought was very impressive across the district. That speaks to all of our students growing appropriately. Our third grade reading was also increased by six percentage points from twenty-one to twenty-two. That was a significant focus that we had in third grade reading. We had some concerns about that. We addressed those. We've adopted a real folk, laser focus on the science of reading, which will also set us up very well for the upcoming dyslexia law that we just found out about, an update about that this afternoon as well. Our gap closure, which looks at all of your subgroups and are you making progress on your performance index with each of those? And we did make improvement in all of our subgroups from twenty-one to twenty-two, which was a good thing. Our gifted performance indicator, as you know, that we've done a lot of work in gifted professional development. And this was the first time ever that we had met the gifted performance indicator, which will also have a big boomerang effect for us next year as it gets reported fully on the report card. It wasn't this past year, but it will be next year in a, in a larger way. We are also serving three to four times as many students as we have in the past, which is a good thing. And the last one, I just wanted to, it's not on there except on some sort of reference piece, but our student enrollment continues to grow. I think that's important to say that people want to be here. They wanna be a part of what we have going on and that's important. There are obviously challenges. I always look at data as information for us to improve what we do. We don't hide from anything. Good data, bad data, whatever that is, there's always challenges to look at. Our most significant one is in the progress category that is related to value added. That looks at the growth that each student can get from one year to the next. And our progress is not what we expect it to be. It's represented on a number of stars on the report card. That has been, since that information has come out in June, that has been the sole focus of all of our work as a curriculum and instruction team, as our principals and our teachers. So there's a particular focus on seventh and eighth grade and a couple of courses in the high school and a couple of key areas at the, at the elementary level. But that is really an important piece of us because it really says, are we doing everything we need to for every student? We spent a lot of time this year digging into that. Early literacy is also an area of focus for us. This has been impacted slightly by the changing of assessment. Sometimes you do things that are in the best interest of students and they might have a little bit of a spillover effect in state-reported things like this. We changed the way that we did some of our assessment of students and it was better for them, gave us better data, but it does cause a little bit of a hiccup in our results this one year. Our continued performance index improvement, we believe that we can be performing better. We are about on par with our similar districts. They give about twenty districts throughout the state that you are considered demographically similar to. And we are on par with them, but I don't think that any of us would say that they are, that we are where we want to be. It's a continued measurement. We want to be continuing to improve upon. And the last one is our college career and workforce readiness. This was not rated with stars on the report card, but it is an indicator that we know will be out there next year and it really lines up with a lot of the work that we've been doing about being future ready. I can get into that in a little bit more. So that's some of the evidence that we have from that state report card. Our response, as I said, from the time that this information came out in June and then subsequently as more data has come out after that, we have developed a fairly thorough response to this. We've developed building action plans and principal goals that are directly aligned to this. We have two goals. One is about core instruction around academic achievement and the other is systems of support that we have at the building level around academic achievement. We held Wednesday workouts, which is what we call them, which are multi-hour meetings every Wednesday throughout the summer with our principals and and assistant principals to develop their action plans around this data and all data with their teachers. That, those were great opportunities for us to work side by side with them, have them really prepared as they came into the school year. We do weekly learning walks where our team and other administrators and other teachers are in classrooms in every single building in the district. We get to sit down with students, understand where they are and they're learning, what they're looking for, give some feedback to the, to the administrators about what we're seeing there and why. We've also dedicated the month of October, Mr. Vogelmann does a meeting every month with each administrator, the each principal. And our team did a ride along with him this month where we just focused in on the state report card, state data, testing, all those things. So our team would know when to fill in and support there. Every building has developed that has a state test has developed an OST action plan. They're incredibly detailed, pages upon pages of detailed reports and weekly and quarterly action plans that happen. They're really dive into targeted instruction that happened in the classroom. How are you using the data that you have to be able to target that towards every single student you've got in, in class? We have also focused greatly on the restart readiness assessment. These were developed by the state of Ohio last year. We were one of the first ones to use them last year and they are able to do benchmark testing and diagnostic testing so that we can assess student learning all the way throughout the course of the school year. I mentioned multi-tiered systems of support. This is on that building level rather than instructionally in one classroom. Multi-tiered systems of support looks like a big word. It's really just how do you use data to target your resources effectively and efficiently to the students that are most at need? We did things that were hap, happened because of this. We had our assessments done by the first week of school so that we could target instruction and intervention from the very moment that kids arrived in school at the beginning of the year. We have teams in all twenty-three of our buildings to assess, analyze and act on all student data. They're able to take that like feedback loop between when data comes in and when we can act from months to weeks at this time. So the teachers can utilize that data and our intervention teams can utilize that to focus on individual students who need that. We developed academic support bells at the junior high school and targeted support bells at the high school. Be able to focus in on students who are most critically at need for graduation and for OST success. We've also focused all of our professional development this year on this goal specifically. August and October days were focused on targeted instruction, gathering in that data. We focused on the science of reading specifically at K two. We have had building level weekly professional development that is focused on standard, standards-aligned instructional best practices throughout the course of the year in between those professional development days. And in fact, our day, our professional development day while election day is happening, our buildings, our students are not in. All of our T, all of our principals are leading targeted sessions with all of our teachers, looking at that, at that data and saying, how do I improve outcomes for kids? We're really excited about that. In fact, our, all of our junior highs are coming here tomorrow afternoon so that all of our math and science and seventh, by grade level also, social studies and all of the electives are all meeting here as across district teams to learn up best practices and share things that are working for their students. We're excited about that work. And lastly, grad plan and ACT SAT preparation in terms of that last indicator. We have developed a system for this year that every student has an individualized grad plan that they are in charge of, that they complete throughout their course of their four years, that guarantees them success in their four Es as they get closer and closer to graduation. We focused on ACT and SAT participation, AP and CP, CCP courses taken. We have a goal of increasing by ten percent with the same academic performance on AP and CCP courses. Industry credentials and all those factors that go into that college career and workforce readiness factor. We moved the PSAT and practiced ACT during the day. So we doubled the number of students who took those assessments this year. And that's been a big win for a lot of our, especially parents of gifted students. Our leads group has been very instrumental in guiding that work with us. And a lot of that work comes back to like, what have we seen? What did, what are the outcomes that we have seen based on that work? Our early diagnostic data that's based on all of that early intervention work has been very promising. It's still early on in the academic year. We do a lot of assessment of students and building culture the first couple of months. And then we really come back and revisit that as we get into November and especially in after the first of the year. We have really focused on targeted instruction that not just do you have small groups in your classrooms, but are you using the data that you have to target the instruction for those students that most need it? We have also, we've aligned our high school instruction. We're bringing semester exams back this year. And so we wanted to make sure that those were not just a check the box assessment. When I was teaching back in the day, they kind of were and we've gotten better at that. And we really want to do something with our high school staff as we bring on semester exams. Do we really, really utilize that as a checkpoint for learning in the middle of the year? Really use that as, as an assessment. We also wanna talk about our gifted growth. We are excited about that. That's really driven a lot of the work and will, will really greatly help our performance index. We did meet the value add for gifted, which, which got us four stars. We will meet the li, the performance index this year for grade three through twelve. We will receive credit for our seventh grade advanced science students um, because we've adjusted the way that they take some of the assessments that they, that they take. And our eighth grade algebra students as well. It's been sort of a deep dive into that data to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to. And we also have, um, as we look at everything leading into the spring, most of this is based on state testing. So we have um, a lot of detailed preparation for our state tests in the spring. Kind of revamped a lot of our work that, that time of year, make sure that we're focused on that the appropriate sort of way. As I conclude here, I do think it's important to understand that this is really important to us. It's a strong indicator of our success. It's a, a laser focus for our team and our, our leadership across the district. Um, and we hope that we see it in partnership with all the personalized learning work that we've done. To make sure that as we go to address these needs, that they're done in the most appropriate way possible. Um, proud of the work that our team has done. Uh, understand that this is uh, of utmost importance to the board and to the district. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or if it is more appropriate to have a follow-up conversation. Happy to do that at a time that's, that's easier for everybody to dive in to that information.
So perhaps we can do both. We'll do some questions now and I
Gladly.
You know, our core competency is student achievement.
Absolutely.
That's the conversations that we should be having. So I think that would be great to have that in a, a very near um, workshop session so that the board can have a better understanding of the data. Would you also send this out to the board, please, this presentation?
Yep.
Board, um, Mr. Miller, did you want to say anything?
Uh, just, well, I get, I get the feedback from Keith and his team at our twice a week team meetings. So um, I appreciate the work that they do and I'm looking forward to seeing our staff in action tomorrow during election day.
Board questions? Anyone? Do you want to start?
Yes, I have.
Well, let Mrs. Bodie start, then you can go next. Go ahead.
Um, so one thing I would like to state that I, I know you use multiple data points to um, you know, to figure out where, where we're succeeding and where we are, um, we need improvement. But I will say that the what, that the data, that the grade card is, is the data that is most accessible to community members. And that is what they decide when, when moving here. That is what, that's what we looked at and that's what people do look out so, at. So that is the one thing that I think, although there are other, other um, data points, I think that is the one that is most accessible and we just it's one of the
Great.
Um, also, um, so you guys just recently went to California on, on a trip. Can you tell me a little bit about what you guys were doing there and, and kind of like how they were, your professional development and what they're going over?
Sure.
With you? Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we are, uh, we have been for a number of years a member of the League of Innovative Schools. Um, and it's some of the top school districts across the country. And uh, we have been, we hosted that uh, organization here in the spring and uh, highlighted a lot of the things that we were doing. And we, we see it as an opportunity to learn from some of the best in the country and uh, share some of what we have. Truly been nice because we have, you know, throughout the pandemic, we weren't able to do a lot of that face-to-face learning from other people. And so we pick up on a lot of really great opportunities to impact our students by seeing that happen in, in other places across the country.
So what is one thing that you're bringing back to Lakota from that event?
That's great. Um, so uh, one of the, the best part of those is going on school visits. So we're able to visit uh, individual schools that, uh, that we see. Um, one of the schools that we visited was an ele- elementary school. It was in a fairly impoverished area. Uh, their whole uh, school was basically around uh, double wide trailers essentially around a playground. And when you walked into every classroom, it was like this oasis of learning that was happening there and all the students were incredibly engaged. Um, what I took away from that was I talked to some of the teachers about as you go through that transition from being a struggling district or whatever, how do you keep your eye and your focus on things? Like we do a lot of that in professional development. And so they talked a lot about utilizing technology uh, to empower students, empower student learning and how you can utilize that to have your student voice really be the way that you demonstrate your learning. I want kids to be able to talk about their learning as much as possible. When I sit side by side with a student and tell me, what are you learning and what are you passionate about? And they can do that. That's better for me than being able to do it on a test. So I think that was sort of a empowering thing to me to say, how do we challenge our teachers and our students to really utilize their voice to talk about their own learning, which is, you know, um, all the research would sell you is the biggest bang for your buck in instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I had another question too. We, I had someone approach me and with concerns of the um, the gifted and talented program. So I saw that you had a slide up there that said you measured your growth. How are you measuring growth in, in that department?
Measuring the growth on the, on the report card or like in general?
In our gifted and talented program, I, there is some concern um, with how we evaluate this program. And um, I would like, I mean, personally, I would, I would like more information on that. And if possible, I would like a report if you can.
I'd be happy to. It's prob, is it all right if we come back to that? I can give you a quick answer?
That, but that is just, I would, I would like a report by the, if possible, by the end of the month because it kind of is fresh in your mind.
Absolutely.
Give us that information because there is some concern on, on that.
Sure.
Perhaps you could talk about how that's evaluated on the report card?
Yeah. So uh, the, as I mentioned, there's an indicator in there around gifted that we had never gotten in the past. We were able to get that this year because we're actually serving more of our students. Uh, it, it ends up being a part of the performance index um, is the way that it's measured in there. Um, it's probably a little deep to dive into right now. If that's all right, and I'd rather do that um, when we have time to dig into it a little bit more. Uh, but we, it's been a big area of focus for us. I know that um, Schaefer and Ms. O'Connor have been a part of that planning with us as we, we rolled out more professional development for those, for those teachers. Uh, really focused on those students. We're actually really proud of that. And the, the hard part about the report card, sometimes it's a year in arrears. So that data is really reporting on last year. It might not be indicating everything from this year. So I'd like to be able to sit down with you and the whole board and dig into that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. D. Dean?
Yes, uh, my, my comment is also related to Ms. Boddy. Um, you touch on gifted uh, students. I love the, if, uh, the concept of evidence plus response uh, equals to outcome. Um, Ms. O'Connor, as we're talking about this recently, and there was also one of my advisors that uh, made sure that I didn't take his permission, so I'm not going to mention his name. Uh, my request I'm going to make today is in order to authenticate um, the response, I mean, the outcome in the future, I know you mentioned uh, distractions because of COVID or something like that. So can we have the data that we have now? That will help us as we work on the response.
Absolutely.
By the time the outcome comes, we have something to work with. Because the only way we can authenticate that uh, the, the rest, the outcome is from the data we're collecting now. So is it possible, like she advised to get us the data now? That way it will be easy for us to use in the future.
Absolutely. Mrs. O'Connor, would it be okay to maybe find a work session to be able to present that? All of that and kind of ask questions back and forth?
I think the entire board is probably interested in that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Because students are, yeah, the student achievement should be, as far as I'm concerned, should be what we should be focusing on. And I in DEI, I asked some questions and I got the answer. Uh, it's like we, we're ignoring some of the aspects. Gifted students are, I don't think we've mentioned them as much as we should. And we've been ignoring them. So it's time to, to pay attention on students' achievement.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coney, for the presentation. Um, and I'm looking forward to the deep dive. I just had a really quick question. I was talking to a colleague in another district that's mentioned that legislation wa- was talking about the future report cards getting points, stars, whatever you'd like to call it, for the number of CCP classes that a school district offers. Do we, do they currently do that? And is that going to be the next? I mean, how?
Yeah. So I mentioned the college career and workforce readiness um, indicator that's on there. It's not given a star, but it will in the future. And so that is made up of um, your AP particip- ACT participation, your AP participation, students who take those classes, students who take dual credit or CCP classes, um, and students who are successful at each of those levels. So it's built out there. Um, so yes, I mean, in, in future and the number of students who have taken CCP classes has increased significantly for us.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Right.
And we would like to see the number of students who are taking opportunities to take AP classes and their success on those increase also. So we're watching that closely. So when that indicator comes live, we know where we fall currently. We have goals around how to improve upon that.
When, do they still ding you if everybody doesn't take the ACT and the SAT? Are they still?
Uh, do, I don't know about ding you, but there, that is tracked and is an indicator on there. Correct.
Ding you. The technical term. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I appreciate your feedback on the walkthroughs because again, as we talked about in community engagement, our students, I think, are often our most honest critics and I appreciate that. Um, and the standard lines instructional best practices, you were talking about the professional development. I just had an opportunity to talk to staff again from another school district who was saying that they feel like they've started doing that as well, and they were very, very positive about all of that work. Uh, with the walks, I know historically we've had times where our senior staff have pretended that they were a student for the day and kind of partnered with a student to actually walk their schedule and, you know, down to the lunchroom. Has, is that something that we've looked at doing again recently or has that happened or it's just kind of different like?
Right. And that was one of my favorite days in education was doing that. Um, uh, it was one of those, you know, something that was lost during COVID, you know, not being able to be in
Sure.
classrooms with students. But I do think it's something that is really powerful. When you get to walk your whole way through a student's schedule, you get to know them really well, their classmates, but you also get to know what it's like to be able to do that. I think it's a great idea to get back to, to doing some of those.
Yeah. I also, you and I have had that discussion before about the PSAT during the day. I am very thankful that that was instituted. And I think, again, what some people do know, don't know is that for our national merit numbers, the uh, national merit finalists are determined from the PSAT. And many people don't take it, not realizing despite multiple communications that go out, that that has an impact. So I think just having more students take it, even though it wasn't mandatory that you had that opportunity, hopefully will encourage uh, better participation there.
But I also like to recognize too that there were opportunities to take the PSAT, the practice AT, ACT or the ASVAB. So we did have several students who took, who were interested in the military, who took the ASVAB on that day, which was great.
Exactly. And it, and it didn't cause distraction. People were able to take what they were most interested in. So um, also just on the league visit that was mentioned. The last time the league was in town here, I had the opportunity to go and shadow in Middletown. And again, just the exposure to what was happening in those classrooms, as you mentioned. I learned a lot that day from Middletown and, and some of the great innovations. And again, they had student hosts for us much like our Liberty leaders today, um, that were very informative. Um, just a couple of things. When I look at the report card and, you know, like, again, I look at early literacy um, that has three stars, which would concern me, but I just want to point out, and I don't know if you'd like to elaborate at all, ninety-nine point eight percent of our third graders were still eligible uh, to be promoted to fourth grade. So even with us getting three stars, we were ninety-nine point eight percent successful in promoting our students to fourth grade with the current criteria.
Correct. Um, all of these, all of this is good data. All of it drives our instruction. Sometimes there's a little bit of a game that is played in terms of how you do that. Um, in terms of how do you do, make decisions to make sure that you're doing the best thing possible for students? Uh, a lot of that comes back to our on-track, off-track. So are students testing that they are not reading at the appropriate level? At one point, and are you moving them to on-track? And so what assessments and when you give those in the testing window? You want data early on for students to be able to intervene earlier. But if you test earlier on in that window, they may not have made the progress to be able to be moved on. So there are some of those things. We, we, um, we do what's in the best interest of students, but we do know that we'd like to be able to see that three stars be bumped up um, in the right sort of way with our students.
Yeah, but I
It's tricky. Yeah.
And, and again, I've also heard that some choose to try to put more people in that bucket. So then they move on and it kind of impacts how those numbers are looked at.
Yep.
Um, you mentioned the multi-tiered systems of support. I know we've had lots of questions on our S or dollars. So I don't know if either one of you want to speak to that has been an investment we have made with those dollars in order to see further student achievement and to impact those students who may have had learning loss.
That is correct. Yeah, those are paid out of S or currently.
So, um, and then with the progress, it seemed driven largely, it looked like the elementary data was still very strong and that really was focused on junior high, which I imagine, as you mentioned, that's where you're kind of laser focused right now and trying to intercede.
It is. Um, but I will say that I think our, I'm really proud of our elementary principals and staff too have said like, we want to see all of that data. We want all of our students to improve and not, not rest on our laurels. But um, we've seen some things about uh, some decisions we've made in, in junior high school about um, how we test students when it might impact those numbers. But also uh, uh, credo, um, credit to our administrators and our teachers at the junior high level specifically for coming around that data. Um, uh, there was a junior high staff that really took about, as testing was going on, taking hours to just dig in and talk about every single student and can they get the most growth out of each one of them? So.
So I don't know if this is still an issue. Again, I know you asked about if it's a lagging issue. We used to test our eighth graders basically on data they had learned in seventh grade because our eighth graders are taking a ninth grade math class. But the way the state does it, essentially our kids are being tested on material that is a year old in their mind.
Correct.
Is that still an issue?
Well, I think so. I, we were, we've done a lot of like deep digging into that, especially last, last week actually. Um, and number of people from our team were doing that. And we just kept saying like, there's no way these numbers can add up the way that we think they should, given the, the students that we have. And I think we will make some adjustments in how we test and who we test when, that will have an impact on that. It's early to say that definitively, but I don't want to put that out there, but we are taking a really close look at when we test what students on what test.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned previously, um, student achievement is our core competency. And I'm really glad we're having this conversation and look forward to a deeper dive into the data. I think it will make a difference. You know, I do feel all districts across the state, across the nation have been impacted by the pandemic, have been impacted by learning loss. And we have work to do. When you say we're at par, as one board member, at par is not, is not sufficient. And we, we need to absolutely change that. And I think we should be a top achieving district as we have been in the past. And I, I think we know that. We know that, that we've got work to do. But I do also think that we've got a really fantastic and professional teaching staff. I think they're aware of the issues. We've already demonstrated that we're working on those issues. There's more work to do. Certainly more conversation to have about it. But I think they're already working to help our kids catch up and I appreciate, want to recognize that effort. Um, a couple of things, I agree with many of the things that my fellow board members have mentioned. I want to recognize that we're really fortunate, and you mentioned leads, to have the partnerships across the district that we do that help to support student achievement. I think our leads group, and I would also talk about our Lakota cares group. I think they both helps to support specific student groups and very much appreciate the efforts that they make. And that our parents are willing to work with us and help to support those students. I do want to say, and Mrs. Casper, this was even more so at the East conversation. But one of the things I found really interesting from our students is they said, you know, we're a little worried about college. We're not sure that we're actually prepared because we haven't had exams for the past couple of years. And we're not sure if once we get to college, we're going to be able to handle those. And so they are actually looking for more rigor, which I thought, you know, that tells us something. And they said, we don't want to be held to easier standards. We want to be tested the way we need to be tested so that we leave high school, we're, we're ready for it. So we're hearing directly from our users and I think we need to be paying attention to that. Um, along with what Mr. Adi had said about gifted education, we did change that delivery model and it's nice to see those numbers coming up. When we do that deeper dive, I'd like to talk specifically about that delivery model and if we're still seeing challenges with that. And I really would like to understand from our parents how they're feeling about that as well, if we can, if there's time to do so. And I'm, I'm just very much looking forward to having more conversation on this and we'll set that up in the near future. Anything else, Mr. Miller or Board? Thank you, Mr. King. Appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on, Jane.
Mr. Zink, the moment we've all been waiting for, our five-year forecast discussion.
I'll say after such a dry topic, let's talk about the finances.
Numbers.
I'm a part-time comedian sometimes. I'll stick to the day job. Yeah, no doubt. Okay, so. tonight, what we're planning to do is, is do a little planning on the five-year forecast. I emailed everyone today. A copy of the assumptions with the numbers embedded in, uh, printed off a copy for you as well. So I'm sure you haven't had time to look all the way through that. I tried to send a bit of a recap in the email, but that's, this is all just kind of a starting point to getting to the, um, approval that'll happen later in the month. So to start, to start off, what exactly is the five-year forecast? Well, it's a snapshot financial report that basically happens at this moment. Um, this is going to show our current or our past three years, actual revenues and expenditures to get a cash balance as well as the current year and four more years forecasted. Just so that we can get a little bit of planning and see some direction. Uh, this, this planning document is 100% based around assumptions that we have at this moment. So as we've worked through this, uh, on the administrative side, that, that is really the point that I've really kept trying to drive home is this is only based on what we know or what we believe at this moment, and it could change tomorrow in theory. So then that brings us to the slide of what the forecast is not. So this is not the treasurer's report. This is a board approved report that is generated basically by the treasurer with the help of the administrative team that then we're kind of producing on behalf of the board for you guys to approve. It's not a cost study. This is, this is a forecast. This isn't the, the gospel holy grail. I mean, this is, this is a starting point. This is a projection. Uh, this also includes our general fund only. This does not include our cafeteria funds. This does not include athletics. This does not include student activities uh, where our band would live as well. Uh, this does not include the S R funds, as was mentioned just a little bit earlier. Uh, this does not include the bond retirement. However, it does include some of the general funded bond items or not bond items. I'm sorry, general funded debt. And to go along with, this is based on assumptions. That's why this is not etched in stone. This is not, this is flexible. Sorry. So the local revenue, that makes up sixty nine percent of our revenues. This includes taxes. This includes um, interest. This includes some fees that we would generate rentals. Um, the triennial tax update that happens in two thousand twenty-three, calendar year that will be collected in twenty-four. Uh, currently this draft is showing a one percent for class or one percent, I'm sorry, class one, six percent increase and a two percent incl- increase in the class two. So as we know more, you know, we don't know if we have a potential, um, what sword I'm looking for, a bit of a inflationary stall out possibly happening with our locally economy. We don't know. We'll keep an eye on that. Uh, also something that's included in this is the uh, Butler County auditor had a tax appeal. We recently found out that that was overturned. I don't have those valuation numbers at this moment, but I've calculated those based around what Westchester uh, produces in their act for report, which is part of their yearly audit. So we are including those to come in on tax year twenty-two. So that is having a positive impact. Um, and also a big one right now is, is interest, you know, although we see these interest rates climbing, one of the positive things of having a strong cash balance is we're able to collect revenues off that interest. So we're working very, very hard on making sure that we're maximizing our um, cash flows for that. Now the state revenue, that makes up thirty-one percent for us in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, something worth adding is on the hospital one ten, we do have a bit of a, of an exposure with the guarantee word, we're a guaranteed district. What that means is that means that, that based on the state calculation, they're guaranteeing us an amount based on what we have received in the past. It's saying that right now in this year that we would be four point one million dollars essentially overfunded by the state from that calculation. So that is something that we've always had since I've been in the school world. It's something that, you know, people would say they have a hard time ever getting away from. But it is a point that I want to make sure that we all understand could pose a risk if that was to ever go away based on how the funding is working today. Um, and another thing we have in this current forecasted period, we have two different biannual budgets that at the end of the day, that typically isn't ironed out until about the day prior to the end of the fiscal year. So to have two of those in this version of the forecast, that would definitely have a risk as well. Um, something else just worth adding is, is we have the fiscal stabilization fund and based on how this draft has been put together, we will continue contributing to that for three more years. So that is very positive in my opinion. Now on to the expense. So you're seeing three sections of expenditures. However, there's many more sections of expenditures in the forecast. The reason I'm king on these three is because this makes up ninety-four percent of our budget. So at the end of the day, this is where the impact's coming through. Wages make up fifty-seven percent for Lakota. Benefits nineteen percent, which includes the pensions, includes the healthcare, Medicare, all of that. And then purchase services at eighteen percent. Biggest driver of the purchase services is always going to be the transportation as long as we contract that out. That makes up fifty-four percent of the eighteen percent. So some of the things that uh, would be worth adding on the um, wages section is we currently have S R funds to planning certain programs. If those programs were to come back based on how we currently have the forecast built, that could have a positive or negative impact. Those are coming back in fiscal year twenty-four. So it's assuming that this is the final year for the S R payments. So keep that in mind. Uh, negotiations, we have a three-year contract currently with both of our bargaining units that will negotiate in the spring of two thousand twenty-four for fiscal year twenty-five. So then that three-year agreement, assuming we had a three-year agreement would span twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. So currently we have uh, some increase in there, but that's just based around what we have today. Um, and then another big driver that we found in this year for fiscal twenty-three is the retirements. This is a big part because this is our final year in the current agreement for the super severance payment. So at this moment, we have thirty-two retirees that have notified us they plan to retire. Um, at this very time, we are assuming that we could probably uh, replace twenty-two of those with new staff, assuming uh, based on an average, we've got um, column B step or increment, I'd like to apologize, increment uh, five. So last year, I think, or going into this year, I'm sorry, we actually averaged increment four point eight. So it's typically coming in somewhere around there. Some will be a little higher, some will be lower. Um, then in the benefits section, there is some chatter about a potential for pension reform. Pension reform on the S T R S side, which would be for certificated staff or, you know, the teachers. Mainly the teachers for us. At this time, it's not known what that would actually entail. It didn't know, it's not known for certain if that would be on a, what we would call the board side. Or if it would be on the employee side. So we'll definitely be keeping our eyes, eyes on that to see what's happening. Healthcare. So this was one that when I first took the wheel for the treasurer's office was very exciting. We were looking at a seventeen point one percent increase. As soon as we found out we had the seventeen point one percent increase, we called uh, Rob Kramer, executive director of HR, called to the meeting. We got the entrance committee involved. Because at the end of the day, this forecast is what drives a lot of the other expenditures. So if we were going to see a seventeen point one percent increase to the healthcare, we wanted to make sure everybody was on board. Um, what we found was, was we could do a few different things that didn't feel like major tweaks to our plans. That along with carving out our stop loss coverage, we got that down to eight point eight. That's roughly in fiscal year twenty-three, a one point two million dollar impact to Lakota. To the general fund to this forecast. So uh, we appreciate the, the work on behalf of the entrance committee to get us to a place that was very um, manageable. Uh, so those are kind of the, the major drivers of the uh, expense.
I think you had provided us data with what the average is over the last five years for the healthcare increases. So.
I did, yep. So moving forward, one of the things that we're working hard on is defining the goals. Where, where do we want to be? Where are we looking to go to? And at that point, that's where we'll work toward aligning the budget to those goals. Implementing and then evaluating to make sure that we're on the right path. So that is um, very critical work on everybody's part of Lakota. I mean, it's, that's not just at the administrative board level. That's all the way down through all of our support staff. So everybody plays a major role in this district. So this is the, the part where we worked on this back in the spring. This is kind of the board's opportunity to say, are there any places where you guys would like to see some more information, some more maybe programs, projects, things of that nature?
Board?
Yes. Um, listening to you, um, I have one question that might be, maybe may lead to other questions or not. I don't know. Uh, on the retirees, I hear you say, um, we have thirty-two indicating that they are retiring.
At this time.
At this time.
They have for the super severance, they have all the way to the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
So there could still be more.
Okay. Now my question he, here is, um, there's a plan to replace twenty-two.
Based on the thirty-two at this moment. It's, it's a attrition of ten at this moment.
Okay. So the attrition of ten. Are we, um, why, why are we not replacing the entire thirty-two? Are we, is it because of technology that has replaced the thirty-two or why the ten?
I believe this was based around learning loss initiatives with the S R funds that now that we're kind of getting past those S R fundings, we're looking at kind of um, one of those programs, if they would continue or if they would sunset when the funding did.
Mr. Zink, let me ask if you could, absolutely a valid question. Do you think you could walk through for just a moment, the process that you took to get here with this being your first five-year forecast? I think it'd be helpful to understand the process and the involvement that you had with, with the rest of the team.
Sure, absolutely. So basically the way we started the process was, you know, we get some initial numbers together. We rolled over from the prior year, we're looking at some of the trends that we might have. And then myself and Hannah Songer from the treasurer's office, Darian was out that day. We sat down with the executive team and I planned on this taking about an hour. It ended up going almost two, um, because it was so engaging. Everybody, everybody was so excited about this. So, but no, it really was a good conversation and that first meeting was really about how it works. How the components of this forecast come together, how everybody can kind of play into this. So once we did, we got a little bit of feedback, but then, you know, kind of got everybody on board with the way this works. To then we had a second meeting where we went into, here's what the numbers are now looking like. And is there anything that we could do to improve upon them? So that's when we had a second meeting at the executive team level and really worked into some of the positions, different projects, programs, things of that nature. To then get the feedback to develop this draft.
Correct. He, I, the reason why I asked this is my concern is I know in as much as possible, we need to save money, but we should not compromise the students' achievement and the resources and what we are supposed to get from uh, this thirty-two instead of only replacing twenty-two. So long as you're guaranteeing that, that will be fine, even though it's a projection.
I'm good. I am guaranteeing that the numbers that we have produced here would make some sense. So as far as the
That's good. Um, I, I would say too, that the, the number thirty-two in terms of retirees is high for this time of year. Um, it's usually not even double digits at this point in time, is it?
That is correct.
So, and I think we'll have some more too, um, by the end of the calendar year for super severance and even those that are not eligible at the end of the school year as well.
Do you want, using, you know, terminology, super severance, do you want to explain what that is?
Yeah. So super severance, the way that that is working is as if an employee is first eligible to retire, they, uh, normal severance package would look like uh, sixty days. This would allow them to get up to a hundred. So an additional forty.
So the benefit of that is
So there is an incentive to let us know early about their retirement.
That's correct. And go with that first eligibility as well. Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
Adam, is there any talk, is there any talk, any talk at all in Columbus about the fair funding plan and whether or not it's going to be implemented in its full force?
I've heard mixed reviews. I have heard the majority of the reviews believe that it will continue. However, for something to go for a six-year phase end to then how long it's sustainable, I don't believe we've had a lot of funding plans in the past that have really lasted longer than eight years tops maybe. So although it possibly would get through that wave, how long it's going to continue, not certain. Nothing can be very certain at this moment with, with inflations going on. I mean, there are so many variables that are playing into this. It does look like the state does have good revenues.
There's no plan to take it out, which was early on part of the
This forecast would not assume that. No, that's correct.
I never say never.
Right.
Other comments?
Um, I'd like to see some work around. I know we've talked previously about class size. The impact of reducing the average class size maybe by both two and four students, just for an example of what impact that would have on the forecast. Um, in additionally, in, in addition, in addition, within our community, I've seen questions around with the increase in the valuations of homes. You mentioned that you built that in, but I also think there's a misunderstanding that when there is an increase of twenty percent in our values of our homes, that we get an additional twenty percent revenue and we know that's not the case. So perhaps some further explanation on how that works and what the actual impact of that increased valuation is with the whole very simplified inside outside mileage and how it has only a small impact because we reduced the mileage.
That is, that is a very large topic. So.
Yeah, just a simple, very simplified version.
At this moment, right now. So.
It doesn't have to be now. It, it can be whenever you come back with whatever this, at the next meeting.
When we do the approval, okay, perfect.
I would do it now.
Say, I, I can, I can go there.
Yeah, we are very excited about that. Very excited.
Isaac, Isaac witnessed that a bit in the agenda setting. We, we started going, I had to get up to the board.
A lot of misconception out there about that.
But yeah, no, a twenty percent increase does not generate twenty percent more revenue to the district due to the house bill nine twenty. That reduces that down. Except for the inside.
We'll take a look at those class sizes that you were asking about. We can do that. We'll also have to factor in space.
There certainly. And so even the run, I mean, there'd probably be additional rental costs or even if it is possible with
So we'll
supply chain. Perfect. Thank you.
Something else before, sorry, something else that also is interesting about this forecast is we are showing in this forecast, three years of actuals that is compromised data. And the reason I would call that compromised data is because fiscal twenty was the year the pandemic hit. And the funding and the grants and everything just went absolutely crazy with everything going on. So it's going to take a while for this to get back to a document the way we're used to seeing it with actual trend data. You know, and then we might hit some inflation. So everything is very tricky right now with this.
Because of the infusion of federal dollars in particular.
Yeah, and we didn't, and, and the state initially dropped our funding and then we started getting this grant, that grant, we couldn't, you know, it was one thing after the next. So.
Mrs. Schaefer, did you finish?
Yes, thank you. This is Billy. Just wanted to say thank you for your
Just wanted to say thank you for your time, for putting this together, and I look forward to meeting with you in the future and just going over this, you know, continuously, so we can.
And we're, just as a reminder, thank you for bringing that up. Mister, uh, Mister Man, Adam, Mr. Zink has issued an invitation to anyone. That would like to come in between now and our next meeting to have an in-depth discussion, just to make sure everyone's very comfortable. I have just a, a few comments. Uh, I would like to see is. Not necessarily tied to the five-year forecast, but it is important to have a discussion on it. An update on the specific S R funds. How that's been utilized and, um. Any funds that haven't been spent, where they will be utilized.
Yep.
Uh, you know, as we talk about the uncertainty, for those of us who've been on the board for a bit with the biennium budgets. It's hard until you witnessed it to really understand. Just how much impact that can have. We had. One biennium budget, I think it was two thousand fifteen, where we were due to be the biggest loser in the state. And it came out of nowhere. We weren't anticipating it. We were scheduled to lose ten million dollars out of our budget.
Annually.
Annually. And it, and it took some serious legislative advocacy and frankly advocacy from our community. Letting our legislators at the State House know, you know what, that's not going to work for us. And we were able to drop it down to a three-million-dollar annual hit, but. That is the uncertainty, and we won't know until the last minute what they're actually thinking. So. Look at, that's why we do things like legislative visits, so that we can have those conversations and say, here are our priorities, please keep this in mind. And that's important conversation to have when you're not facing a biennium budget. Those are relationship-building conversations. So. Something to remember. Um. Nice work on healthcare cost. Reduction. That is great to see, almost that, that's terrific. And I think. You know, we talk about this a lot, but our resources just spent in the right place, reallocation of dollars instead of new spending. As we look at deficit spending in the five-year forecast. That's a priority as well.
Constant calibration.
Constant calibration, there you go.
The healthcare was a big one. That was.
It was.
Very big.
Well, and that took the entire healthcare team that, or healthcare committee or insurance committee working together to make sure. They're looking at the whole pie and looking at the best interest. So, thank you.
Great work. Mr. Zink. Well done on your first forecast.
We're not done yet.
I know.
Let's get through the approval.
On your first forecast presentation.
Yeah.
And, and I want to say thank you also for the, uh, the collaborative process. With bringing the leadership team in and really getting their input in the process. I think that was a great idea.
Yeah, and I plan to continue with that. And just like, um, Ms. Bodie mentioned, you know. I put in the, in the email, I want everybody to come in one-on-one, so we can really go through this and make sure that you understand kind of. Get through the questions, the better everybody on the board understands, the easier everybody will kind of. Work through this together. So, thank you.
So thank you for the good work. Anything else for Mr. Zink? All right. It's also, you know, I didn't know if we could find somebody like Mrs. Logan who smiled when she did the five-year forecast, but. We appear to have found that in Mr. Zink, so.
That's awesome.
Definitely.
Yeah.
We'll move to number eight on the agenda, treasures, recommendations, action items. We will take these as a whole. A, approve the minutes for October tenth, twenty-twenty-second. And November second, twenty-twenty-second. B, amend. Approve the amended minutes for September twelfth. And September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-second. And C, approve the monthly financials, September twenty-second, September twenty-twenty-second. And October twenty-twenty-second. I am seeking a motion. Do I have one?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. D. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Zink, anything further on that?
Um, the, on the, uh, amendment to the minutes. What we had found was, was that didn't give kind of a fair depiction of. Maybe how the public participation had taken place and working through with legal on what we needed, you know, to get in to make sure that. You know, we didn't have a bias or anything of that nature. Um, that's kind of. A model that we're trying to put moving forward to. Keep that as. Clean as possible.
Very good.
Our official minute, I'm sorry, yeah.
Go, go ahead.
Or the recording.
Our official minutes are the recorded minutes, correct?
That is correct.
Of video.
So these are like courtesy minutes or like supplementary?
It is basically a compliance. We just have to. Put this together, get the signatures on. Audit always asks for them. This is where they'll review it. So.
Is it possible we could do without written minutes? Not that I'm suggesting that, but I'm wondering.
I will ask legal first thing tomorrow morning because I would like that more than anything.
And, and I do appreciate having the summary of minutes. I think it's easier than somebody sitting down and watching a two-to-three-hour meeting. And it does encapsulate the business of the board. So there is something to that.
In all fairness, though, I mean, as, as. Painful as the minutes are for every treasure that I've ever known, um, just because it's something that we, we seem to. Not put in the highest priority, we probably should. Um. It is a quick way that somebody could scan through and be able to see. If there was a place that they would like to go in that recording to get a little bit more information on how that went, because no, no minutes will ever. Show what a recording would show.
All right, is there any further discussion, Board? Seeing none, I have a motion in a second to approve the treasures recommendations. Mr. Zink, please call the roll.
Mr. D. Yes, Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Or we'll move to superintendent recommendations, action items. I'll take these as a whole. A, approve personnel items. B, approve the field trip, and C, approve donations. Do I have a motion?
No moves.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is Bodie. This is Bodie, thank you. Mr. Miller.
Pretty much routine items. The only, um, late add was the field trip, and that's for some of our cyber students to go to a national conference in St. Louis, but they've been asked to present it.
Sounds like a great opportunity. Uh, any discussion, Board?
It looks like we have many of our supplementals on here, and so I just want to thank all of our staff who participates in these supplementals. I think the. Hourly rate is likely less than McDonald's and, uh, most of these roles. So thank you for putting our student interest first. And being willing to invest the time and all these additional opportunities for our students.
Well said.
Any other discussion? Greenland, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board will move to number ten. The board action items will take these separately. A, we have a motion to, I am seeking a motion to add a special meeting. The purpose of this will be to have a vote. We need to do it before the end of November on our five-year forecast. We'll also have further discussion. We've asked for a couple of follow-up items from Mr. Zink, so. We will focus on that. We also have a policy committee coming up on November eighteen. And we'll be just discussing changes to our public policy, public participation policy. In which case, we would be looking for a first read at that meeting. So the dates that we're considering would be November twenty-one or November twenty-eight. Would someone like to put forward a motion? That's the Monday before Thanksgiving or the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Okay, okay, let me understand. So we have the policy eighteen, is it that confirmed?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So we're only. Moving for one, which is the special move.
Us, we'll have a special meeting. To approve the five-year forecast and also to approve policy. So. I would like, I need a motion, and then we can have discussion.
I would like, I mean, I would like to make a motion. To schedule it on the twenty-first, is that what you're looking for? To schedule a special meeting on the twenty-first.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. All right, we can discuss.
So. We have to vote on this motion, motion, if you don't want the twenty-first, to do the twenty-eighth, or, or is this where the discussion lies?
That's where the discussion.
I would prefer the twenty-eighth.
The reason I chose the twenty-first only was because I know people are out of town for Thanksgiving and on, on a Monday. I don't know what pressure that puts on anyone. I, I'm okay with either, but I just, that was my. Thought process on that.
Yeah, that, I might, I was saying, my thought process is saying the other way, is that that's the week of Thanksgiving, the twenty-first. So a lot of people might, I, yeah.
I really have no preference. I just, that was mine.
Good. I just think of the twenty-eighth to be easier, but I, again, I. Do you have a preference?
To do either at this point.
Sorry, anytime.
I can do both, but I just thought it would be easier to do the twenty.
For administrators, is there a preference?
I'm going with him.
I know, I, I can do the twenty-first. I don't, I'm.
Can you do twenty-eight?
I can do. I, I personally would prefer the twenty-eighth, just because the twenty-first, we're coming off of the Capitol Conference. And then coming in, that's the only thing I'm thinking of, but these are all wonderful points that are being made, and I. Whatever will make it work. So.
Mr. D.
I'm okay with twenty-eight, but whatever date is convenient for everybody, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, I'm good.
Mr. Miller.
Either.
All right.
Twenty-eight.
So.
So since we have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and vote.
And deny it. I mean, I'm used to it. Can we amend the motion?
We could amend the motion if you would like to. To the twenty.
Why don't we just cancel? Why don't we just vote no on this one and make a new motion?
You'd like to withdraw the motion?
As sticky.
We can do, we can do the twenty-four. I mean, if the sticking points me on the twenty-first, let's do the twenty-first, and then we'll get it over with. And then we'll have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
So, a motion and a second on the floor. To, uh, set a special meeting. On Monday, November twenty-first.
But we're not even talking about.
Any further discussion?
What about time?
We would do our regular time at six-thirty.
Oh.
Is there any further discussion?
I missed the second. Who did the second?
I did.
Mr. D. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Mr. D. Mr. D.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
And that is for the twenty-first.
Thank you, Board.
So confused.
And if anyone does turn up with a conflict, then we'll, we'll work that through and do what we need to do. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we will move to. Board action item B, motion by a board member. The motion is by Mrs. Bodie. Would you like to go ahead?
Yes. In rec, in recognition of inherent physical differences between boys and girls, males and females, as defined. By their chromosomal and anatomical distinctions that represent over advantages over males. Or males over females regarding physical strength, speed, and endurance. I move that Lakota's organized competitive sports for girls will remain exclusive to girls. Boys, as defined in this policy, may not complete in any organized athletic competition that is or was designated for, or designed for girls. Furthermore, if at any time one of Lakota's girls' competitive athletic teams are matched with a team. That has a biological male playing on it, Lakota will forfeit that game. This proposed policy is not meant to interfere with coed, intramural sports, or casual athletic events, or any other sporting events traditionally or specifically designated. As coed, it is designed as a safeguard against girls' sports being rendered obsolescent.
The chair will second. Mrs. Bodie, we're going to let you start with your comments, since it's your motion.
Well. What I'm presenting this for, or what, how I'm, I kind of edited, I basically edited my presentation as I have in the past. The reason being, I know that there is fear of leaving the O H S A A. Um, however, this just protects Lakota from any transgender males competing. Um, in our girls' athletic sports. And again, regarding, you know, physical strength, speed, and endurance. And, and to prevent injury to our females from competing against. Teams that have a transgender male on that team. This will prevent any harm coming to our girls' athletic sports and. Um, prevents. What am I thinking of? Um. Scholarships from being taken away from our girls as well.
Anything else? So. With the board's permission, I'll start comments. I have some questions for you. How many students at Lakota are we talking about that are actually asking to compete? Do you know the number?
This isn't about. Specifics. I'm just asking that we make a rule that no girls have to compete with a male on their sports team.
So I'm, I think the specifics are important, and I'll explain that in a minute. So do you know that number?
Why do you?
I'll assume that you don't. How many in the state? Are you aware of how many in the state currently are competing as transgender males?
Call the question.
I actually have the floor and you don't, so you're not able to call the question.
I am able to call the question. It doesn't matter if you have the floor or not.
Actually, it does.
No, it does not.
Mrs. Bodie, we're out of order.
Point of order. Call the question.
What is your point of order?
Call the question. I move. We need to vote on the motion. Thank you.
So you do not have the floor, so you cannot call the question. So I'll continue with my questions.
Point of order.
So.
Call the question.
You are out of order, Mrs. Bodie.
Order, President. Call the question.
Mrs. Bodie, your lack of decorum was out of order.
Question.
Do we need to recess for a moment for you to collect yourself?
Question.
You're out of order, so I will continue as I do have the floor.
Call the question. You are disobeying.
The question would be, what are the consequences?
Question.
That I think we need to consider. What are the consequences to our student athletes? If we forfeit a game? And I actually asked this question. And the response that I got was that the GMC Conference School. Standings could be impacted by it. And it would be a decision based on the GMC Conference Board.
That you're okay with.
I'm not aware of any situation in which a conference school. Has refused in their fifty years of, of experience and, and history. Has refused to compete against another conference school for any reason. I would say also that, uh, I did some research into the Ohio High School. Athletic Association, and there are some very. Strong and stringent requirements that are in place. To make sure that this is not something that happens easily. In terms of the number of students across the state right at this moment, currently, there are four high school students that are competing from other districts, not from Lakota. Lakota has zero students that are asking to compete. I would also ask, when we look at policy, we need to consider, how do we enforce policy? Do we know? Do we know if students are required to disclose transgender status? And a concern would be, how do, how do we intend our administration being able to enforce that? We can't give them a policy that's impossible to enforce. I will say that as I look at the University of Pennsylvania, Leah Thomas, the National Swimming Championships. I think that was incredibly unfair to those collegiate female athletes, and I think many would agree that it was unfair. But I also see that there's unfairness to our own students in this proposal. It doesn't strike me that we're considering the best interest of our Lakota female athletes in this particular proposal. Why should our students have to forfeit a game based on what another district is doing? What if our female athletes decided that they wanted to compete and they wanted to beat that team? We're taking that decision away from them if we follow this proposal. If they decide, as our students with the student voice. Who've dedicated their time and their season to competing, that they want to forfeit a game. That should be up to them. And not up to us forcing them to forfeit for the sake of making a political point. To recap, and this is important to remember as well. This subject was brought up. At the August twenty-second meeting. The issue was tabled. It was sent to our policy committee. And it was tabled indefinitely until state legislation, which is in the works, came forward to show us where that was going to go. And it was tabled until the policy committee actually had a chance to see what was happening across the state as well. That fact hasn't changed. For this. Particular issue at this time, it is not current to Lakota. In certain cases, I can actually see where this proposal could harm. Those students that we've said we want to protect. I agree with the unfairness to student, female athletes. I don't want to see that happen. But in this particular case, this proposal doesn't do what it needs to do for our student female athletes. Mr. Miller, would you like to add anything?
I mean, taking everything else aside, just the proposed policy as it's written. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility for some of our student athletes, our, our. Girl sports, female sports, to get to a, either playoff game or a state championship. We've had that. We have that happening. With our teams all the time, and I'd hate for them to have to forfeit.
We've had that, we have that happening with our teams all the time and I'd hate for them to have to forfeit based on a policy. Not considering any of the biological issues or things like that, but just that policy as written.
And I think many of us would have concerns about that.
Limit opportunities for kids.
Board comments? So you are for our. The floor is for the other board members to make their comments, Mrs. Bodie. Mr. D, do you have a comment?
I have a comment.
Or. Because I think we should be proactive and protect our sports, our girls' sports before we have to.
Mrs. Casper.
I, I think it's important to understand that a boy sitting in the audience today could not decide to be transgender and go play girl soccer tomorrow. There is many, many, many steps, I also did some research with OHSSA and there are many steps that you have to go through to be approved to do that. And it has to be done yearly. It's not even that you can do it one time and be done. So your, I, I don't agree with, it's not like the girl soccer team has a six foot four, three hundred pound boy playing on their team. They have someone who has gone through the process to change to be a female, which.
There was just recently and, and.
Mrs. Schaefer has not had an opportunity to speak.
Excuse me, I'm figuring I have the floor.
You do not have the floor.
An injured student that was injured.
Mrs. Bodie, you are out of order again.
On a female.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I do not want that to happen to our, to our girls playing athletics.
I would say that forfeiting games is going to have more of an impact on scholarships and the ability of our female students to compete than what the protections that are alleged from this policy. So I am not in support of this policy.
Thank you, Mr. D, do you have comments?
Yes, I do. Okay, I want to say here categorically that I strongly stand against transgender playing guess sport. That should never happen because Ms. Bodie, you know, enumerated all the disadvantages which I agree with. And I also disagree with whatever transformation or how long it takes for anybody to transgender as be a female. Even if you do it ten years, you're still a boy. So I still disagree with the length of transgender or whatever it is, but I remember like Ms. O'Connor said, this was a concern, we talked about it for a long time and we made a specific request. And I remember on August twenty second board meeting at, if you go and watch the video, you don't have to watch the entire video, I'll give you the time, write it down. At the hour seventeen minute mark, Mr. Rob Vogelmann gave us an update on two proposals, three, actually, he mentioned three policies, but the two are one on transgender playing guess sport. And then the second is political group forming in schools prohibiting display of political flyers, group flyers and banners and stuff like that. Or introducing politics in our schools or political issues in our schools. So those two were of particular interest to Ms. Bodie and I. And we asked him to research on that so that we form a policy that will eventually be the governing document that will help us handle this issue. I remember this is twice I asked this question, I, I posed this question to you. How many do we have right now or how many are we expecting in the entire state, how many do we have? If I remember vividly, I was told that in the last ten years, we have had how many? Eight in the last ten years. And right now, we don't have any in Lakota. We don't know if there will be any requests, but this is it. If we have any issue that come up, I know it's going to take time, it's, it's going to take time before they even come out to, to play. We would know. Then secondly, he, I sent him an email and he responded to me. They have researched, they've started the research. He has contacted eighty-two school districts. And none have a situation like that, that is pending in the entire state, eighty-two school districts. Then he also mentioned that no school district has made any request of Neola to add specific language to their current policies that prohibit political groups in school beyond what is already in current policies. So we are working on that. And what I want to see is get a policy. That way we're speaking one language. Now, I want to, in Lakota, I, I know this board had, have control of whatever happens in Lakota, but does not have control over anything that happens in another school district. So this is my personal opinion and this is what I will say. If we ever go to any spot to play any game anywhere and there's a transgender kid in that school, since we don't have control of that, I would rather leave that to the parent of that child to say, I don't want my kid to play in that school because we don't have control over that. And I believe that this is a very proposal, I will uh, uh, suggest that Ms. Bodie help us push this through. Mrs. Gross, Jennifer Gross. Push it through, let's have the state take care of this. That way, the schools that we don't have control over them will not present kids that are transgender playing guess sport. It will take care of it in the entire state. So it will prevent the injury and it will also not prevent opportunities for scholarship for our students. But if we don't have control over that, I don't think this proposal would take us anywhere. But I strongly want every parent to know this and I'm, I'm going to be specific. I campaign on this and I'm, I'm never going to change my, my stance on it. But we have to do things that make sense. We have to follow procedures and make sure that we don't violate policy again and we get sued. We just got sued recently on a policy that we, we thought we got it right. So let's get it right. Last with other school districts, what we cannot control, we shouldn't be a victim of it. So that's, uh, with that, I call for the question.
I have a motion to call the question, is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. D, thank you, Mrs. Casper, with no further discussion, Mr. Zink.
Mr. D. Mr. D. Call the question.
Call, yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
You're not supposed to vote on a call to question, so I'm not voting.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll vote on the motion as presented by Mrs. Bodie. We have a motion in a second, please go ahead, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Bodie.
Please clearly state the motion before we vote.
You're welcome to reread that.
Actually, it's in policy that the board president has to state the policy or, or state the, um, motion.
Mrs. Bodie, would you like to reread your motion?
We don't have it in front of you.
Mr. Zink, could you reread the motion for Mrs. Bodie, thank you.
This proposed policy is not meant to interfere with coed intramural, oh, sorry, I'm, scroll up. In recognition of the inherent physical differences between boys and girls, males and females as defined by their chromosomal male XY, female XX and anatomical distinctions that represent overt advantages for males over females regarding physical strength, speed, endurance. Scroll too far, I move that Lakota's organized competitive sports for girls will remain exclusive to girls. Boys, as defined in this policy, may not compete in any organized athletic competition that is or was designated or designed for girls. Furthermore, if at any time one of Lakota's girls' competitive athletic teams are matched with a team that has biological boy, has a biological boy playing on it, Lakota will forfeit that game. This proposed policy is not meant to interfere with coed intramural sports or athletic or casual athletic events or any other sporting events traditionally or specifically designated as coed. It is designed as a safeguard against girls' sports being rendered obsolescent. Ms. Bodie.
My vote is yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
No.
Mr. D.
No.
Ms. Casper.
No.
Ms. Schaefer.
No.
The motion does not pass. We'll move to eleven on the agenda, public comments. As a reminder, the public participation guidelines that we follow are stated in Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy zero one six nine point one. The board values public expression on educational issues. The Board of Education also values an orderly and efficient meeting. And therefore, public participation will be governed by the following rules as outlined in our policy. For our speakers, we ask that our speakers register their intent to speak. I have a list of those who have registered to speak tonight. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You do not need to state your address as it's on the registration form. Each statement made by our participant is limited to three minutes. We'll have a timer on the screen up here and at the point that you see it go to yellow, please wrap up your comments so that when the screen goes red, you are finished. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer and no person may address or question board members individually. Please be mindful of the guidelines, if they're violated, there'll be a warning and then we'll ask that you sit down and forfeit the rest of your time. Please be respectful. For our audience, a reminder to those in the audience, we ask that you respectfully listen to all points of view at the microphone. Clapping, booing and commenting amongst yourself is distracting. It makes it very difficult for our speakers to be heard by the board and it takes away from the time allotted for public comment in our meetings. If a lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of our meeting, I may call for a recess or adjourn to another day. As I explained, the board does want to hear from you, but it is critical that there be public decorum to allow us to do so.
May I see the list, Madam President, so I can follow along with the speakers?
We're going to go ahead and start, I'll ask that you sign, that you line up, we'll start with Ms. Diane Hughes. We'll ask that you line up along the wall over there so that we can proceed forward through this. Following Mrs. Hughes will be Brian Flandemeyer and Mrs. Superiorian and Dana Richardson. Mrs. Hughes, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Is that a no, you're not going to let me see the, the list of?
Just go ahead, Mrs. Hughes.
You're on.
My name.
It's on.
My name is Diane Hughes. Two months ago, I stood here and tried to express concern over the moral failure of Matt Miller. But Linda O'Connor wouldn't let me speak because she didn't like what I had to say. Then last month, you shut down all comments. Two major suppressions of speech, which begs the question, why would you break the law to keep us quiet? The public records have not changed in the last two months and while he won't be criminally charged at this time by his own words and online solicitations, it is clear that Matt does not have the moral foundation to lead our school district. You can't get rid of the evidence. You can try to squelch it, which you did by deleting over ninety public forum comments and by canceling meetings. You can try to hide it, which you did by not releasing records to the public. You can ignore it, which you've done by ignoring over six hundred signatures from protectlakotakids.com. You can try to spin it, which you did in concert with the media and Matt's attorney by publishing false and misleading statements. But the public's concern is not a witch hunt. Matt's pillow talk and solicitations for extra sex partners proves it. We are not in the clear and it's not time to move on. Last week, this board voted four to one to accept the all clear. Wrong. Matt is not absolved from all wrongdoing, don't twist the truth. The truth is that he has failed morally. It appears he has broken the state professional code for educators and he does not embody the moral character the majority of Lakota residents expect from a leader. Your vote makes you complicit with his failures and indicates you believe that fantasizing about drugging, molesting and recording attacks on children is acceptable. It's your vote. Well, it's not acceptable. Matt's behavior and pillow talk is not okay. Suppressing speech is not okay. Twisting, spinning and hiding truth is not okay. The people of the Lakota district have a moral code that is vastly different than Matt's and four members of this school board. You do not reflect the values of the community. Get over your grievances with one another and stop listening to bad legal advice. This community is and will hold you responsible for trying to advance your own agenda and morals instead of those that reflect us and support children, parents and Lakota at large. We are not going away and you will not silence us.
Following Mrs. Hughes, Mr. Flandemeyer is up next, Mrs. Superiorian, Mrs. Richardson, Mr. Argo. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Brian Flandemeyer. I am here tonight also to call for the resignation of Mr. Miller as superintendent. I'm calling for this due to his failure to meet the professional behavior expectations of the Code of Conduct for Ohio educators, which all Ohio teachers are expected to meet and which he, of course, has acknowledged that he also is expected to satisfy. The code clearly calls all teacher to a higher standard of personal conduct than a typical citizen as they obviously are the people we trust to educate our children. A following phrase from the code is particularly pertinent. The educator will fulfill the role of trusted confidant, mentor and advocate for students' rights. Surely, expectation applies to Mr. Miller in spades as superintendent. Sadly, given what we know now, I can only say I want nothing to do with Mr. Miller being a confidant or mentor to my grandsons. In fact, I'm confident he will be a bad influence in them and feel like I must speak out tonight so that the children of Lakota do not in any way get the idea that such behavior will lead to healthy relationships and is okay simply because it's between consenting adults. In addition, the professional behavior section of the code calls for an educator to be a positive role model and responsible for preserving the dignity and integrity of the profession. How can anybody now claim that Mr. Miller can properly represent Lakota after this has become a matter of public record and open discussion online at board meetings and in our community? What a catastrophe this is for our, for Lakota's reputation and for all the good that, for instance, we heard tonight here that's going on in our classrooms today. Obviously, the board has conducted an investigation include that since Mr. Miller's not performed any provable criminal act, that therefore then there is nothing to see here, let's move on. This appears to be a whitewash to me and does not address my core concern about his fitness to be a teacher of our children. Why the board clearly refuses to acknowledge that there is an expectation that all teachers and Mr. Miller in particular are to be held to a higher standard of morals is profoundly disturbing. Again, I'm calling for Mr. Miller's resignation. Due to his failure to meet the requirements of educators' code, members of the guard, if Mr. Miller does not resign, I'll call on you to step up and dismiss him. Good day.
Mrs. Superiorian, Mrs. Richardson, Mr. Argo. Mrs. Bretta Stagie.
Hi, I'm Rachel Zuparian, speaking for my daughter Shelby tonight. She wanted to speak after being treated poorly at the last board meeting. These are her words. As an actual student of Lakota East High School, I believe that I have to say, what I should have to say should be considered more than out of touch adults and people who haven't been to school for more than decades. I am embarrassed of this district. There are so many changes in the wrong direction and we are taking real education away from me and my peers. When I told my out of district friend I was going to a school board meeting tonight, she replied, oh, you guys have that crazy lady that posted porn, right? Lakota is known for our sports teams and our crazy lady. Speaking of ladies. Speaking of ladies, I do not permit a woman to teach or assume authority over a man. She must be quiet. Timothy two twelve. The Bible does not have a place in public schools. These aren't the values that should be taught in school, no questions asked. Why isn't everyone treating posting real child porn as serious as allegations that have been proven false? Child pornography is disgusting, and it makes me uncomfortable that a lot of adults don't seem bothered by it. As a representative of my student body, we are more concerned and embarrassed about our crazy lady. There have been student memes made and posted on social media platforms. She is a joke to the student body. When I attended last meeting, I was told that I was pathetic for being here. Me, a student. I was told this because I'm not a taxpayer. That makes me pathetic. It's funny enough to me that many high school students over the age of fourteen are taxpayers and do have jobs. As a student and a taxpayer, I asked our district to prioritize the students and remove politics and religion from decisions affecting me and my peers. Lakota advertises its high levels of cultural diversity, so forcing the proper teachings of Jesus is extremely tasteless when a big part of the student body doesn't acknowledge Christianity as their religion. We are the district named after Native American indigenous people that roamed freely on this land before the white man showed up and started forcing their beliefs of God on them. Let's do better to respect the culture we have and that we have embraced in our name. The Lakota name does not need to go through another unwanted religious awakening. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Richardson is up next, Mr. Argo. Mrs. Bretta Staggy, Mrs. Dur. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Dana Richardson. My two kids have attended Lakota schools since kindergarten and are currently in fifth and seventh grade. I had some comments prepared for last month's meeting that I wanted to share today. You might remember that there was a junior high cross-country meet here that night. It was the GMC Regional Championship Meet. And that night, the Lakota West seventh-grade girls and Lakota West seventh-grade boys won the championship. So I wanted to congratulate those teams and thank the coaches for their dedication and their time and for such a great season. Last month and today, the board was voting on some personnel items, and I took some time to review the document from last month. What struck me were the items that came at the end, the supplementals. This is the staff that, in addition to their standard classroom responsibilities, are also taking on roles to provide our kids with the stuff that will make their time in school that much more enriching, fun, and memorable. Sports coaches, class, class club sponsors, band, winter guard, theater, peer club sponsors, choir, drama club, art club, empowerment club, student council club sponsors, Special Olympics, and more. And all on last month's supplemental list, there were eighty-two staff in total, and this month, many more. So I just wanted to thank them for their time so their kids can continue to have these great experiences. I know that in the past, there's been a tendency to focus on resignation, so I just wanted to be sure to take some time to acknowledge the staff who stay and for their hard work and dedication. This is what, this is what our teachers are up to in schools. They're teaching our kids in classrooms and devoting even more of their time to enrich their opportunities outside of the classroom. Unfortunately, we have a board member who has hurled unauthenticated accusations at our teachers that they are doing something deserving of a gotcha moments. Just today, she posted a commentary entitled, "Teachers Unions Expose Ohio Students to Smut Masquerading as Affirmation" to her Lakota-affiliated Facebook page. I went back to see how many other posts were critical or disparaging to public school teachers and stopped when I got to ten. Could this be why we have so many early retirements and resignations? This constant disparaging of our teachers has got to stop. They deserve so much better than this constant assault to their intentions and character. There are many amazing things happening in this district every day because of our teachers and staff, and I hope that we can move forward as a district to continue focusing on the real things that will impact students in this district, like focusing on how we can support them and our teachers to make up learning losses, putting serious work into our master facilities plans, and how we can meet the needs of our students, teachers, and staff. Please don't delay this important work any longer or allow the noise and distractions that keep getting in the way to continue to disrupt the real needs of the district. Let's get back to putting our kids first.
Mr. Argo? Mrs. Bretta Staggy, Mrs. Dur, Mr. McCall?
Uh, my name is Alex Argo. Um, first off, I am super pumped for Mr. Zink's explanation of House Bill nine twenty. I see people misunderstand it all the time in the community, and I welcome an opportunity for education on that topic. I'm probably the only one in the room who's pumped for that. Um, secondly, I, I just wanted to give a quick update from Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised regarding calling the question. Uh, it is not in order when someone else has a floor. Uh, the person who moves the, the previous question or calls the question must have been recognized by the chair. Uh, the fact that someone yells it out does not compel the chair to recognize that as a legitimate motion, especially when the person who yells it out has already exhausted the right to speak, i.e. twice. And when the chair is going to recognize someone who pre, who properly has asked to be recognized, the motion, if made, needs to have a second. It is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Uh, onto my, what I was actually going to say. Um, so there has been a lot of talk in our community and from Mrs. Body that stems from a place of hatred and ignorance. As a parent, I think it's important to protect our Lakota kids from the fallout that hate can bring to everyone in our community. Most of us would agree that we want our kids to finish high school and find a path that leads them to a successful and stable future. Obviously, a big part of our children's success will be determined by the type of education they receive in Lakota. Since her time on the board began, Mrs. Body has been working to undermine the reputation of this district whenever she's given the opportunity. Whether it's wasting time with resolutions based on made-up science, voting to take opportunities away from the students for the Ohio High School Athletic Association, or struggling to read her prepared scripts. People are talking about Lakota across the country in negative terms. Eventually, the diminished reputation of our schools will affect things like our ability to keep good teachers, college acceptances for our graduates, and property values for all of us. Most importantly, the hate that is being spewed by Mrs. Body and members of this community is causing irreparable damage for Lakota. People stand at this mic and spread rumors, lie, and call people names just to advance an agenda that is clearly based on hate. Miss Body took her hate speech all the way to Columbus to speak on behalf of a resolution that would take rights away from LGBTQ students all across the state. Tonight, Miss Body even suggested that our female athletes just forfeit games based on her hate. Her actions are deplorable, and this board should center her to firmly convey the message that her hateful words do not represent the thoughts of the Lakota Board of Education. Show our families that you will always protect all Lakota students. You swore an oath to do that, and that is what we expect from all of you. We also expect that five board members should be making decisions based on what is best for students all in the district. The influence of the Tea Party, Darby's handlers who don't live in Lakota, and people who just seem to hate Lakota shouldn't determine the fate of our school and our community. It's time to shift the focus back to providing a quality education for every single Lakota student.
Comments?
It's time to protect our kids and our schools from hate.
Mrs. Bretta Staggy is up, Mrs. Dur, Mr. McCall, Julie Perino. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, firstly, I would like to again request that employees of the school district who do not live or own property here be permitted to speak during public comment. I feel like if they are employed by the district, there should be no reason why they don't get to have a voice, just like the rest of us do. Um, next, I would like to request more detailed information uh, about the supposed curriculum audit that's going to be conducted by individuals who do not have experience or expertise in conducting curriculum audits. Frankly, the whole thing continues to feel like a wild goose chase, but I digress. Uh, I would again request more details. How will community members be chosen? What definition of CRT will be, we will be, will we, we, yeah, will we be using? And will it be an evidence-based audit? Do community members need qualifications? Will they be compensated? How long will the duration of this take? What happens if supposed CRT is found? And how will that information be authenticated and verified? Is this really necessary? Moving on, uh, abominations, pure evil, repulsive. These are the terms that a particular board member who took it upon themselves to speak about the students and families they supposedly serve in the Lakota School District had made at a recent, uh, State of Ohio Board Mem, Board Meeting in Columbus earlier this month. Uh, I would like to formally request that Mrs. Bodie be removed from the Diversity Committee. After ten months, uh, it's fairly clear that she is making no effort to listen, learn, educate herself, or understand anything in regards to low di, their purpose, or how diversity, equity, and inclusion are so important and how much value they add to every student's experience in the district. The words that spew forth when she speaks of the LGBTQ plus community or heaven's different cultures are abhorrent, disgusting, and should not be representative of the staff, students, or families that live in Lakota while her, while she sits on the Diversity Committee. This isn't contributing, this is damaging. The students and families who live here hear this anti-trans rhetoric. They are paying attention. It is completely uncalled for and inappropriate for any board member to make these public comments in an official capacity. Trans kids just want to exist without ridicule, attack, and segregation. I do appreciate this being addressed and spoken about this evening. However, the actions of the board would speak louder than words. How dare she be allowed to attack and ridicule students and families with an official capacity with no repercussions? Enough.
Mrs. Dur. Mr. McCall follows, Julie Perino, and then Joan. I believe it's Joe Perino.
Uh, my name is Debbie Dur. Um, I have twins who are twenty-twenty-two graduates of Lakota East High School who didn't want me to add that to my speech tonight because they're very embarrassed to even be associated with Lakota schools. Um, after all of the information that came out against Mr. Miller, um, the censorship by Isaac Adi and the rest of the board members, um, they just were shaking their heads. They just, they just cannot believe that they graduated from this, this school district. Um, I also have a grandchild in the district. Um, two years ago, my husband and I adopt, not adopted, but took custody of our granddaughter to get her out of a bad situation. And again, after everything that's come out, um, the censorship of speech, the drugging, the molesting, the Ashley Madison, the this, the that, you know, we took her out of one bad situation, and I feel like we're dropping her right back into another.
Please go ahead, Mrs. Dur.
Um, I'm speaking tonight to call for Matt Miller, the Lakota School District Superintendent's rising resignation. Um, the admission to the pillow talk involving minors, sex, drugs, videotaping is so disgusting and beyond deplorable and not becoming of a leader of a school district. Um, to Mr. Adi, you owe an apology to the parent that you accosted at the la, after the last board meeting. You have become, I really thought that you were going to be good on this board, that you were going to bring some conservative values to the board, and all I'm seeing is that you're a wolf in sheep's clothing at this point. You've pulled the old bait and switch on a lot of the parents. And to this board, with the exception of Darby, um, you should all be ashamed of yourselves for as long as you knew about this information about Matt Miller and that you sat on it and that you sit here and you talk about how great Lakota School is and what you think about all of the transparency. You, you all failed us very miserably. And Darby, I just want to say thank you for all your efforts for our children.
Mr. McCall? Mrs. Perino, Mr. Perino, Doug Horton?
Benjamin McCall, Liberty Township. You are going to vote next month to choose an option, from my understanding, on the master's facilities plan to move forward on planning. Uh, some have asked to slow or put the hold on the planning. While I know that some may have valid reasons, I fear not making a decision will cause more harm than good. Uh, putting the master facilities plan on hold for any amount of time, much less a year, will not address or take care of the potential fixes that the plan could remedy. Waiting will not decrease costs or class sizes. Waiting will not stop enrollments, nor will it start groundbreaking or construction this or next year. Many of the challenges of busing logistics can be addressed as a result of any chosen plan, and concerns for safety can be made better through updated buildings as a result. Uh, issues around class sizes can be addressed by acting on the plan, but we don't get remedies or fixes by waiting. Uh, now, there have been some comparisons of the facilities plan to that of buying or fixing our homes. Now, normal home doesn't have the foot traffic that a school does, but even so, if you're, if you think about your home, if your basement was flooding or your foundation was cracked, heating and cooling units slowly breaking down, bathrooms or ceilings were leaking, or there were any other problems, how long would you wait to fix any of the areas of your home before you could no longer live comfortable? Uh, I doubt you would go long to address those issues regardless of some of the cost. So additionally, it said that children should be a priority and not a system. I would argue that without a system, no child can learn. A system is curriculum and resources that we as individual parents have a part in. It is a network of teachers, parents, and administrators that care and teach our kids. It's the relationships the kids build as they spend time and learn with their friends and classmates in those buildings. It's the Monday through Sunday practices, Friday and Saturday games that build traditions and memories, go Lakota across. Uh, however, this system becomes fractured from inefficiencies caused not by a board as a whole, because a lot of people say the entire board, but by particular members of the board, or dragging feet around, any proactive actions for appropriate initiatives or what the master facilities plan can create. I would argue that it's not the plan that would become fractured, but the future of the kids served by the district. Not just mine and yours now, but the families like us thirty years and beyond. Uh, for those of you that do not, do, uh, or no longer have kids in the district, I ask to set aside any ideas around expense for a moment and think more about any of the value that could be created by new facilities, uh, the improved safety and busing logistics that can be created, and the experiences that come from the improved spaces created by, uh, this plan. On a final note, given some of the disagreements between community members around, uh, open comment, I've long believed that it's tough to have open conversations and back and forth because it is a business meeting. So I'd like to see like a community setup meeting like we do in our open conversations around other subjects where the community can talk as long as there's respect, just not disrespectful, and where people can openly have a conversation, get answers, answer questions, and also for you to exchange, uh, because sometimes this meeting doesn't allow for that. Thank you.
Mrs. Perino?
Hey, y'all. Julie Perino?
Could you bring a mic down, please?
I look forward to reading the investigative report that I expect that Lakota will be releasing to the public because I have read both of the transcripts of Matt Miller and his ex-wife, along with other articles of public record. I am not comforted by the conclusion of this so-called investigation. In fact, I'm even more concerned. In his transcript, Matt Miller paints the picture of being a victim of his wife's sick desires, which includes engaging in sexual fantasies about young children in our district. Now he claims he is a victim of a smear campaign and calls everyone who questions him crazy. Well, I have many questions. If what Matt says is true, why wasn't he concerned for his children's safety? If what Matt says is true, why didn't he ask for help? If what Matt says is true, why didn't he tell his wife no? Why did Matt choose to engage in the sexual fantasy and role-playing about children? Why did Matt continue reading once he knew it involved three young boys in Lakota's school district? Why didn't Matt leave his wife? Why was his wife the one that filed the divorce shortly after these events took place? Although he is taking no responsibility for his actions, he doesn't deny participating in them. In his transcript, he said he didn't cross lines with minors. I disagree. He already crossed many lines by participating in sexual fantasies and role-play involving young children. Admittedly, it's in the transcript. A man who is in charge of more than seventeen thousand children in our school district made the decision to participate in sexual role-playing. This was an intentional act with the purpose of sexual arousal and climax. It's despicable. Who will be taking?
Audience, audience.
Who will be taking responsibility if we later find out that Matt Miller decided to cross more lines? Who's going to take that responsibility? He is either a weak man or he's lying. Let's give him the benefit of the doubt. And let's assume he's just a weak man, and he couldn't stand up to his wife. He couldn't say no. Let's say that he was just a weak father, and he couldn't stand up for his kids. I don't want a weak man as our superintendent. A person in this role should be of utmost character, morals, values for our children. I want Matt Miller to resign from Lakota Schools effective immediately. Furthermore, I will have you know that he continues to use lawyers to silence people and send cease and desist. So I'm sure I'm going to get that next letter. So I'm sure I'm going to get that next letter. And I'm telling you, don't hide behind this. You guys know what he did us wrong. Stop sending a cease and desist. Own up to what you did. Have accountability. Thank you.
Mr. Perino. Mr. Horton follows.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Joe Perino. I have four kids that went through the Lakota School District and a fifth that is currently in high school. I've been a big proponent of the district and previously only had good things to say. I have heard about a lot of things that happened at other school districts and had the arrogant attitude that that could never happen in this school district. I also had the same attitude at my Catholic church. Unfortunately, the priest in my parish was accused of inappropriate acts. And it turned out that these allegations had been raised years prior and nothing was done about them, which then led to him being able to repeat the activity with different children. This was a clear example in our local community of what happens when these types of thoughts go unchecked. Right now, in our very own school district, we have someone who clearly admits to engaging in sexual discussions regarding children. Right now, we have the opportunity to protect our children or to brush this situation to the side, just like my Catholic church did. The outcome will not be good and I would not be able to live with myself if I remain silent and watch it happen again in our community. If you had a brother or an uncle or any male that you know come to you and tell you that he and his wife had discussions about sexual acts with children, would you let that man alone with your kids? Of course not. You would keep a keen eye on them. My youngest, that is currently in high school, has special needs and is very vulnerable. I now feel as though I need to keep a keen eye on her while at school. And if something hit, something bad did happen, what's to stop this district and board from overlooking this as well? I ask the board to protect my daughter. I ask the board to protect all of our kids. Protect them as your own. Anyone that has talked about doing sexual types of things with children needs serious help, but most importantly, must be removed from any possible scenario of being overwhelmed by these temptations. God forbid that he could act them out. Thank you.
Mr. Horton, you have forty-five seconds. Would you like to utilize that?
So, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I was going to talk on another topic, but given the time constraints, uh, let me go ahead and take the opportunity to thank the board members tonight who, uh, voted to protect uh, the fed, the girls' sports here in Lakota. Um, as a father whose daughter plays two sports, Lakota East, I'm glad that you guys made sure that there is no, uh, nothing that would impact the ability for those girls to go out in the court and compete. It's not lost on me that in the, in the personnel items tonight, uh, we approved the, uh, supplementals for several of the coaching staff. I think it's important to note that they get paid very little and I appreciate that you protect our girls' sports here in Lakota. Thank you.
Thank you all for your public comments tonight. I would like to remind the public that Butler County Sheriff's Office in consultation with the Butler County Prosecutor's Office did investigate Mr. Miller. The sheriff's office found no probable cause to issue charges. The board also hired its own investigator. That investigation was just completed as an independent investigation. And the independent investigator also found no evidence that Mr. Miller poses any risk to children or to kids and no evidence that he violated school policies or used his work devices for any kind of sexual activity. Board, is there any new business? We'll move to number twelve on the agenda. Seeing nothing, I do want to remind the board that we have a policy meeting. I'm sorry, we have committee meetings on November eighteenth. It's a Friday. And the community engagement, diversity, and policy meeting will be meeting that day.
Did we switch the time? Did they switch the times?
Uh, I'll send it out to everybody. And Adam, maybe get that notice out earlier. Okay, thank you. Hearing nothing else for new business, we'll move to closing comments on the agenda. We will start with Mrs. Bodie, then Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Casper, Mr. Miller, Mr. Zink, Mr. Adi. Go ahead, Mrs. Bodie.
First of all, I would like to say that it's comical that you have let, uh, Linda, you have let called a question happen in the past and now you choose not to let, let that motion happen. Uh, so I am concerned tonight after hearing, hearing a speech, what we are teach, teaching in our history classes. And I also would like to say that I want to make it abundantly clear to those parents and the community members who are offended by an investigation that was so clearly designed as a red hearing and what a truly and what is a truly, truly a question of morality and character regarding our current superintendent, Matt Miller. Again, a question of morality and character. I am also offended. I understand completely when I am told by parents in the community that this issue will not be dropped. It will not be swept under the carpet, that there will be justice for our children, our schoolteachers in our communities. That you are not going away and neither am I.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Uh, I was excited to see that Heritage has installed a social communication board and looking forward to hopefully expanding that pilot that they're doing. Um, I also saw we accepted the resignation of Lauren Brown, our health, uh, care services manager, and I just can't even imagine how different her job has been the last couple of years than what she anticipated it to be. So thank you for all of her efforts. Um, Wednesday night, there will be a send-off for both of our bands and there's a community performance. Um, so people have the opportunity to see that. And I would just like to say, well, a couple of things. We finally actually spent time focusing on student achievement and students tonight rather than other things that are taken away from what will actually have an impact on the future of our kids. So I'm thankful and hopeful that the board's work will continue to move in the direction of doing what we need to do as a body in order to focus on our students and their future.
Mrs. Casper.
Um, it was great to see the little liberty leaders today. I, like I said, had the pleasure of seeing them when we picked, um, the stuff, the bus up and I'm very, the counselor there does so much to promote that. She does so much to get all of those kids involved and all of those building that leadership and that community service skill and the empathy skill, all the skills that employers tell us they want in our students and all of the skills that we get pushed back from a lot of the times because it's not academic, but it is academic. They are learning tons and tons of life lessons. So I'm just glad, as Mrs. Schaefer said, that we're finally back to focusing on students and what amazing students we have. But again, the community conversations getting, those kids are amazing, what they, what they talk about, what they know, what they feel, that, what investment they have in their future. It's a, a great thing to see. Um, Lakota West, it will be going to the third round of the football playoffs on Friday against Elder at Princeton. So get your tickets early because I hear it's going to be a sellout. And I'm, you know, here's me talking about Lakota West.
I'm proud of, I'm proud of you, Mrs. Casper.
Yay. That's all.
Mr. Miller.
Uh, the only thing I have to add is, um, one of the things that we look at in terms of keeping a building open is our, our absentee rates and illnesses and our threshold pre-COVID, during COVID, post-COVID has been twenty percent, twenty percent of student bodies out, then we'll consider closing a building. Um, we actually had a building today that got over that threshold after the school started, so not before, but we sent enough kids home that we hit that twenty uh, percent threshold. Now, kids aren't in tomorrow because of Election Day, so we have a, hopefully people are getting, getting well and, and, um, as they won't be at school, but, oh, those are numbers that we're watching. So it's flu, it's RSV, it's COVID, it's combination of all those things, but it's something that, um, we're keeping our eye on and, uh, the team will look at. And so if we have a prolonged uh, number percentage-wise out of building, we'll consider closing it. So just want to make comment of that, just so no one's surprised. Just so no one's surprised if we had to do that and it would be a case-by-case building-by-building decision.
We would just close that building.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Zink. Coming up, your five-year forecast high.
Trying to gather my thoughts. I do look forward to meeting with everybody when I wanted to go over the five-year forecast information. Uh, also, something worth noting is, um, we just finished our open enrollment for the district for healthcare. Uh, Jenny Gens part of our office, she has worked very, very hard on getting that, uh, off the ground each year to make sure that it goes as smoothly as possible for all of our staff. So I want to give a shout out to her and thank her for that, that work. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to add at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Adi.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Please listen to me. Um, I'm going to speak from my heart. I do not write anything when I speak. I speak from my heart. Okay. I have seen a lot of this written on social media, on blogs, accusations, uh, emails, texts about me that are not true. I am not longer a kid. I'm a fifty-nine-year-old man. I make decisions for myself. I make decisions that have brought me to where I am today. Nobody ever influenced me and nobody will ever influence me. Never influenced me before and will ever influence me. I'm not perfect, but I'm a man of integrity and honesty and I'm a man of faith. Accusations, number one, of censorship. I'm not trying to define or, 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 or change anybody's mind. You can make, make up your mind, whatever you want to say, but this is the fact. It wasn't a censorship. It was because there was a case that was in the court and there was a settlement. Um, this took a lot of my time going back and forth negotiations, back and forth until the settlement. And I knew that if that happened, by the way, public participation is not a law in Estet of Ohio. I can't remember the, uh, I can't quote it right now, but I can, if you want, I can check it for you. It's a privilege. Every school district can allow it and I want it. I, I want public participation. I'm one of those that insisted that we should have even more than thirty minutes. If you remember, go back to the videos, videos online. However, when I knew that we were sued because there was a mistake or whatever it is misunderstanding in our policy. And I know if that day we insisted, we're going to lose more money. Probably twenty more people would have violated that law that day. Which could have cost close to two hundred, three hundred, or even four hundred thousand dollars. Um, I came from a very poor background. I know that if just for people to speak and we're going to lose that kind of money. And we had lawyers all over, Lakota has become like a lorry. Lawyers realized this is the place they can come and cash out. They were all over the places and I, at the end of the meeting, I even got to meet some of them. I'm like, why do we throw this kind of money to people? Why can't we fix our policy and go back to business as usual? I wasn't trying to stop anybody from saying anything against anybody. I was just trying to do what is right. And I know there are community members and taxpayers that if they know the truth, they will know that what I did wasn't to stop anybody for saying anything. We, everybody has spoken what their, their heart is today. But to protect the kids, the resources that we need to take care of our students, I, I, I don't get paid for this. For those that don't know, this is a voluntary job. And I, I took it because I wanted to volunteer. I want to give back to my community. I do many other voluntary, uh, 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 services as well. I'm a prison minister. I mentor prisoners every Sunday morning, two hours. Every Sunday morning between seven and nine AM, I'm in the prison speaking to inmates, trying to get them back as better members of the community. I've been doing this for fifteen years and I'm still doing it. I'm not interested in any. I love politics. If you go to my personal page, I post polit- politics. So your information, I'm a MAGA Republican. And I'm called the enemy of the state and I accept it because I know the freedom that I saw twenty years ago before I moved to this country and I think that is misleading with. I made a promise to those, to this community during my campaign. I have not drifted from that. But what I want to do is number one, I follow processes because I'm trained to do that. I have master's degree in business management. Project, project management is one of the courses I took. I believe in processes. I believe in being professional. I believe in, in following things logically to the conclude, to conclusion. I'm going to say this. When I, after the election, somebody outside this school district called me. Isaac, we have a body in our pocket. We want to have your ear. And I said, me, you want to have my ear? You will not have it. I'm going to work with facts, evidence, and I'm going to make sure any decision I make is going to be based on facts and evidence. I'm not perfect. I can make mistakes. So I'm not going to go into details about what had happened, the decisions I made, but I owe this to my, to, to the district. I was elected and I'm going to do what I'm supposed to do. Make sure I focus on students' achievement. If there's anything distract, that's going to distract us. I promise I'm going to fight critical race theory. Kids indoctrination. If I find it, I'm going to fight it. But get it, get this point right. I'm never going to lie to you to make you happy. I remember we had an issue of, uh, a website that was, that was in our school district. Up to now, I'm still waiting for where that website is. Because if I, if I know where it is, I'm going to, I'm going to find out why is this website here? So as we by the way, let's try as much as possible, take away attention from the kids and the students. That is what I stand for. So if anybody think I was protecting anybody or I was censoring anybody, I have a reason for doing what I do and I want to work with facts and truth. If the community feel I fail them, let them speak to me. But I know there are only, I have a lot of information from what eighty percent of communities is saying, Isaac, I know what you guys are doing. Keep on going, go to the bottom of the truth and facts and act on it. I know that a few that are very loud and they're saying what they say, they speak to me. I, I still love everybody. If you still need to talk to me, why I make my decision, why I made it, you can call me. I'm knocking doors during this campaign. I've explained to so many people, they say, ha, is that really true? Of course. Anything you are hearing, most of it is a lie about me because nobody changed me. The only person that changed me is my Lord Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit. And that is what moves me. Nobody moves me. So, um, I know there's an accusation over there that I'm a disappointment. Um, yeah, I know. But the truth is very bitter. And if anybody still have anything else that you think you're going to bring, I think that I work on facts and truth. I'm not going to make anybody happy because they want to work on emotions. I want to, give me your truth, be your facts. I work with it. Thank you.
One of our One of our speakers tonight said it's not time to move forward. And I agree with that. It is time to move back to what our core competency is and what our core focus needs to be. And that's our students. Tonight, there was a lot of good discussion about student achievement and it wasn't all positive. There was a lot of conversation about things we need to be doing better and a recognition that we have things we need to do better. It's my hope that that's the kind of conversations we're going to have in the upcoming board meetings. And moving forward on other critical work like the master facilities plan that we've been talking about. Towards student achievement, our liberty leaders, you know, it's when you watch those kids and their comfort level with coming in front of what's a pretty intimidating big crowd tonight. And the fact that they were so well-prepared and ready to speak to us votes well for how they'll do in the future with it. Uh, I want to say also congratulations to Lakota West Football Team. Can't wait to cheer them on. They have been on a tremendous roll this year and terrific to watch. Those have been fun games. I did have an opportunity to see a Lakota West theater production this weekend. And I really appreciated that our director said she was ready to stretch our students and do some things that they hadn't done before. And she had two acting classes. And so she made a point with double the work of having two cast so that those students had more opportunities to actually engage in that. And they did a terrific job. It was a, was actually a tough, tough, um, did you, did you all see it? It was a tough script with some tough singing. It was good. And I didn't have an opportunity to see the Lakota East Theater, but we have a new director there. I've heard she's doing a sensational job as well. At Capitol Conference next week, we have four student groups that will be presenting. They'll be our ambassadors for districts across the state. And we have more student groups than any other district that will be presenting there, which is terrific to see. I wish them well and I thank them for being our ambassadors, taking some time off to come up to Columbus to visit. Thank you to our community for the recent stuff the bus. We just heard that we had forty-five percent more donations than we had last year. And we have, I believe it was thirty-three percent more families that need, um, help from Reach Out Lakota. So thank you, community that's listening to those that have engaged in that process, including our students and families in our schools. Thank you very much for helping to meet that need as a part of our district. I do want to issue a personal invitation. We have significant number of Veterans Day events coming up across the district to honor those that have served. Please take a moment to do that. If you're not involved in a school, you're welcome to come to Miami University EOA Learning Center. And we have an event that will start at eleven o'clock on Veterans Day. I'd love to see you there and we will have a number of our community veterans there. It'll be an opportunity to tell them thank you for their service. And on a final personal note, um, I recently, just in the past few weeks, went through some major surgery. And I want to say thank you to my fellow board members that were very, very supportive to Mr. Miller and Mr. Zink and to our administrators that were aware of it. Thank you for being there for me. On that note, board, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mr. D, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Adie.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you all for coming out tonight.